Late. You, well, you and the city clerk, we're situated. Okay. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Can you turn on your microphone, please?
Here.
Thank you.
Hey, that works.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent at this time. Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Here.
Mayor Terry.
Here.
With that, we'll move on to item two, and I'll ask the city clerk to read the television announcement.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays will be on Wednesday, November 23rd at 9:00 a.m. and Thursday, November 24th at 9:00 a.m. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. With that, let's see. Okay. With that, we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance, which tonight, if we could have led by Shelley Blanchard. And if I could ask the audience to remain standing for our invocation that tonight, I'm guessing that Isabella Marie Uli from St. John Vianney, is she, okay. And you did it last time, too, didn't you? Okay, cool. All right. I wasn't sure if we just had a reprint here. All right.
Going pro.
So after that, we'll have Isabella come up and lead us in an invocation after that.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, in this time of Thanksgiving, we are grateful for those who have put into leadership positions in our community. Please guide our community leaders as they make the decisions for the advancement and progress in the growth of our community. Please help them lead with wisdom, compassion, understanding for all those they serve. Help our leaders take part in meaningful discussions that allow them to strengthen the group and develop new relationships while cultivating positive bonds in our community. Please bless the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Please make them mindful of the people they serve and not just hear their word, but actually listen to the voices of our community. May they speak when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. Always keep them humble in knowing that they are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it is their responsibility to serve the common good of all. Grant them the knowledge and understanding to know and do what is right and moral and just. May they always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that is held good, right, and true. Amen.
Thank you. I don't think we've ever had somebody do that two times in a row. Definitely not that young either. So, thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to presentations, and first up, we have 5.1, Presentation of a Proclamation to Helen Klein on the occasion of her 100th birthday, which will be presented by our Vice Mayor.
Good evening.
I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. So we have the pleasure of honoring a very special person tonight. And so we're going to let, introduce a video that tells you why she is so special.
Helen Klein says that when she was growing up, exercise was not for girls. But in 1978, at the age of 55, a friend challenged her to run. She did and has not stopped since. Since then, Helen has shattered gender and age stereotypes, completing 90 marathons and 143 ultra-marathons. Only one other woman on the planet has completed more. At 66, Helen Klein completed the Grand Slam of Ultra Running. At 70, she ran the 145-mile stage race in the Himalayas. At 72, she completed a 145-mile race across the Sahara Desert, followed two weeks later by the 370 Eco Challenge in Utah, a feat so stunning it was featured on Dateline NBC. At 74, Helen ran 143 miles across the Andes and Peru. At 80, she broke the world record for her age group in the marathon by 39 minutes. At 81, she completed the Tahoe Triple by running marathons around Lake Tahoe. Helen Klein is truly Mastercard's Master of the Marathon, winner of ESPN's A Ready Award and Torchbearer for the 2002 Olympics. She has been inducted into the Sacramento Running Association, Roadrunners, and USA Track and Field Falls of Fame. A 30-year Rancho Cordova resident, Helen is the mother of four, grandmother of nine, great-grandmother of four, and great-great-grandmother of two. She also holds multiple world records for being the fastest runner for her age and running the longest distance for her age as well. She once ran across the state of Colorado in five days and 10 hours just because it was there. She holds a world record for that, too.
So. So now you understand why I'm going to ask the absolutely incredibly special and unique Helen Klein to join me up here. So this is a proclamation given in recognition of Helen because, believe it or not, ladies and gentlemen, in a couple of days, she's going to turn 100. Whereas Helen Klein is a longtime Rancho Cordova resident, born on November 27, 1922, I'm sorry, it's not enlisted anymore. And she celebrates her 100th birthday in a few days. And whereas, as you heard, Helen is the mother of four, grandmother of nine, great-grandmother of four, and great-great-grandmother of two. Over the years, she has enjoyed a career as a nurse, an ultra-marathoner, and a motivational speaker. And whereas Helen's running career began in 1978 at the age of 55, Stacy and I think we need to start. And she is the holder of approximately 75 world and American running records. She has completed 90 marathons, 143 ultra-marathons, and she is the oldest person to complete a 100-mile trail run. And whereas at age 66, Helen was one of the first women to complete the Grand Slam of Ultra Running, which includes five 100-mile mountain trail runs in a 16-week period with 175,000 feet of elevation change. At age 70, she ran 145-mile race in the Himalayas. At age 72, she completed the Marathon de Saab, a 145-mile race across the Sahara Desert in Morocco, followed just two weeks later by completing the 370-mile Echo Challenge in Utah. And whereas at age 74, she ran the 143-mile race across the Peruvian Andes. At age 80, she broke the world marathon record by 39 minutes when she ran 4.3.1.32. So that's probably down to 32 seconds, if anybody's counting. At age 81, she completed the 78-mile Tahoe Triple by running three marathons around Lake Tahoe in three consecutive days. At age 85, she broke the world marathon record by an hour and four minutes when she ran it in just a little over five hours. Three months later, she lowered the record, her record, by 12 minutes. Whereas Helen has received numerous awards and honors, some of which include the Mastercard's Master of the Marathon Awards in 1992, the US Track and Field Hall of Fame in 1999, 2002 Olympic Torchbearer, Roadrunner Hall of Fame in 2004, Sacramento Running Association Hall of Fame in 2013, and the Sacramento Sports Hall of Fame in 2015, Rancho Cordova Sports Hall of Fame in 2015. So now, therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova does hereby honor Helen Klein on the occasion of her 100th birthday, and our Mayor Donald Terry has signed this proclamation to honor you. And I want to give this to you, but I also want to call Brandon from our Assembly Member Ken Cooley's office. Ken could not be here with us tonight, but he sent somebody from his office to also give you a resolution.
I'm Helen's husband, and I don't have any floor ready.
Ladies and gentlemen, meet Norm Klein.
Thank you, Linda. Hello, my name is Brendan, and I am representing Assemblyman Ken Cooley here in the District Office in Rancho Cordova, just across the hall. And on behalf of the Assemblymen and all of us here in Rancho Cordova, I want to present you with this award of recognition for outstanding achievement. Thank you. And in celebration of your 100th birthday, your continued contributions as well to Rancho Cordova community, and your absolutely outstanding world-class achievements in the sport of long-distance running. Congratulations. You honor us, and we celebrate you.
And so we want to add to this, and I know all the Rancho Cordova residents here today are envious because we want to present you with a key to the city of Rancho Cordova.
Oh, thank you.
You will always be welcome anywhere in Rancho Cordova. So thank you very much.
Incredible.
Thank you so very much. I'm just so impressed with it. It's wonderful, wonderful thing.
So we want to take some pictures because we have other people who have come to honor you tonight. The, some committee members from the Rancho Cordova Hall of Fame are here, and they want, they came to help you celebrate also. Get out of this office. So, guys. And gentlemen, we want to take pictures. Okay.
Celebrate her 100th birthday. Helen will be running to 5K in June.
Yes, I think she's running in the Run for Red. This is remarkable.
Surrounded by November babies.
Okay. I think Maria will tell us. Norm? We need you to.
Oh, 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 wait, wait, wait.
Well, I was going to say that while I was young, and, or not young, but starting at 55, I ran all those races by using a tortoise. And I would run so, like a tortoise, up those mountain trails, and then I would run very fast down and on the flats. And so now, now that I'm near that 100th birthday, I am taking the tortoise by its name and going slowly uphill, downhill, and on the flats.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Everybody needs a strategy, and you have it mastered.
All right, so where would you like to, Helen, yeah? Let's go over here. Follow Maria. Over here. Yeah. Okay. Norm, could we have you and Helen right here in the middle? Maybe Helen right around this side. Actually. Yeah, just this way, and then by Helen? And then Brenda, you want to get the handle?
For those of you who aspire to take up running, people always would ask her, how do you do these 100-mile mountain trail runs? These aren't on roads, these are on mountain trails. And she said, I always run the first 50 miles with my body, the second 50 miles with my head.
I'm not blocking here, am I? Wait, who am I looking at?
Okay, please.
Can I just tell one more story that is really fun? This western state's 100-mile endurance runner, you familiar with that? Starts in Tua Valley, runs over the mountain trails in Indian, that's a high school football stadium. One day, she won a day when she was about 70, 67, 68 years old. She was running the race, and she's up in the high country. And she's running with another fellow who's running alongside her. And a guy comes up behind her and says, Helen, I would recognize you anywhere, about the legs of a 20-year-old. And about 10 minutes later, another guy comes up behind her and says, Helen, I would recognize you anywhere, you got the legs of a 30-year-old. So she said to the guy she was running with, I gotta quit this running. I've gauged 10 years in the last two miles.
That's perfect.
All right, happy birthday, and I have wonderful congratulations to you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item 5.2, which is recognition of Senator Jim Nielsen on his retirement. And that will be presented by Councilmember Sander.
Senator, if you want to join me.
Honored to be here.
Well, Senator, it is an honor to see you back in our chambers here in Rancho Cordova. It's a somewhat sad, but also happy occasion that brings you here this time, your pending retirement after a, well, nearly a lifetime of service to this, to this great state and to our area. And so we're here to thank you and commemorate that enormous amount of service you have done for us here in Rancho Cordova as well as the Sacramento region. So we have this nice proclamation. It's not quite as grand, perhaps, as they give out in the Senate and the Assembly, but I can tell you it is very much from our heart. So I will read some, some aspects of this proclamation as I give it to you. Honoring California Senator Jim Nielsen for his service to the city of Rancho Cordova this November 21st, 2022. Whereas Senator Nielsen was first elected to the State Senate in 1978, to the State Assembly in 2008, and then re-elected to the Senate in 2013. Whereas he has been a tireless advocate for the Sacramento Valley and for the city of Rancho Cordova. And whereas during his tenure, Senator Nielsen has been active and visible representative for his residents, businesses, and organizations in the city of Rancho Cordova. And whereas Senator Nielsen has been one of the hardest-working elected officials serving on many committees and commissions, including the Little Hoover Commission. And whereas despite the size of his district, Senator Nielsen has always attended and been engaged in Rancho Cordova events and important issues affecting Rancho Cordovans. And whereas Senator Nielsen was a key supporter of the Mather Veterans Village, a home for 150 homeless and disabled veterans in Rancho Cordova by advocating for this important project. And whereas Senator Nielsen has written many letters of support for infrastructure projects in Rancho Cordova, helping the city acquire grant funding that made more important projects, such as Folsom Boulevard Rehabilitation Project and the White Rock Road Improvements Project possible. Now, therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova is honored to have worked with Senator Nielsen and expresses its sincere appreciation to him for his service, his dedication, his high standards, and his deep and genuine desire to serve the residents of the city of Rancho Cordova. In witness thereof, our mayor has set his hand and caused the seal of the city of Rancho Cordova to be affixed this 21st day of November, 2022. And that's for you, Senator. Thank you very much for all that service. And we have one other little thing that, if you're here tonight, this may not sound correct because you have doubted to the contrary, but we very rarely give one other honor, which we're going to give. Unfortunately, it's the second one you've seen tonight. Both of which are very rare. I think that brings us to three this year.
I believe so, and I don't think we've ever done two in the same night, ever.
This is unprecedented. So this is the rarely granted Key to the City of Rancho Cordova. And due to your more than decade's service to our community, we are happily awarding you a key to the city, which means you are always welcome at any part of our community at any time. And once again, we thank you for all your service.
These mean an awful lot, ladies and gentlemen. I thank you very profoundly, from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
You know, our little story about the key, I had several of these over the decades. But one special occasion happened a few years ago. And in one year, I had two honors that were very special. Maybe a little bit ironic, but interesting. I'm a fan of Rodin, this sculptor who did the Thinker. And they had the opening of the Rodin Sculpture Garden at Stanford University, and I was invited to attend. And one of his greatest works was called The Gates of Hell. That same year was the year of the Paradise Fire. That small town up in Shasta County that I represented completely destroyed. And for the second time in my representation, the council presented me with the key to the Town of Paradise. And I could honestly then say, in but one year, I went from The Gates of Hell to having the key to Paradise. Little bit of progress. Anyway, thank you very much to all the council and the citizens of this fine community, and I'll still be around close, and I'll be helpful to you always. You have a lifetime contract with me.
Very good. We look forward to that next chapter.
You ready to sing?
You know it, already warmed up, and it's very easy to sing.
All right. With that, we will move on to, well, on my agenda, it's another 5.2, but I believe it's actually 5.3. 5.22. Yeah. So we're going to say that that was 5.3.
It's because I'm 22.
Right, right. You're ageless. We know that. So with that, we have another birthday to celebrate tonight. And we have a tradition at the City Council, so we'll, we're going to dispense with that here in a sec. But it is Mayor, I'm sorry, it is Councilmember David Sander and four-time mayor. It is his birthday on November 25th, but we're not going to have a meeting between now and then. So tonight, we are celebrating his birthday. And with that, we will have our, our, not youngest member of the council, but our newest member of the, I'm the youngest member of the council. But our newest member of the council lead us in song.
That would be Siri, but thank you for knocking that out.
Well, she's not here, so. Once again, here we go. And a one, and a two. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear David, Mr. Sanders. Happy birthday to you. Hey! 74 years young. Boy, that was. And we have a key to the city. No. No, not a, no.
We're not doing a third one.
Not a third key? I'm pretty sure, no. Do we have cupcakes or something? Yeah. I will say, I believe that was our third this year.
Yeah.
I know I gave one out at the air show. I don't think we've given one in, no, no, so before. We did hand one out at the air show to the consulate.
Well, thank you, even at the advanced age of 76, which I'm not. I, with Helen here, you can see I'd still have a 24-year career at something ahead of me.
Got a lot of running to do, too.
Yeah, that's right. And probably a good time to start.
Well, thank you for that, and I'm sorry we don't have a key for you. With that, we'll move on to item, whoops, where am I? Item six, which is public comment. Citizens wishing to address, actually, Council, before we move on to that, just to manage everyone's expectations on time tonight. We don't normally make a habit of voting on the agenda. But I would suggest, at least for staff planning-wise, in the absence of Councilmember Pulapati, I'd like to table and continue item 12.2, which is our residential waste collection and street sweeping contract to a date uncertain, and we'll find when that would be. This would be Councilmember Gatewood and Pulapati's first opportunity to ever have this as a presentation item. And considering the importance of it and being the second-largest line item in our budget, I think I would make the suggestion and be open to a motion to table and continue to a date uncertain.
I'd like to second that motion, and, and I agree 100%. We need to have both us, both me and Siri need to be educated and have the presentation, so.
So I'm going to take that as a motion. I need a second.
I'll second, but could we inquire how many people are here to talk about that? Just to be sure we're not discomforting a large number.
Okay. Doesn't look like a lot.
Anyone here to speak on that item?
On 12.2. Was anybody here tonight?
No.
All right.
Okay.
Makes it easier.
That's actually a little surprising, but considering it wasn't an action item tonight, it won't be the next time, but we'll get it back here. So I have a motion and a second to table and continue to a date uncertain. Can I get a roll call on that, please?
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Okay. Thank you for that. Now let me go back to our regularly scheduled agenda. And citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time via teleconference or by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. If you want to make a public comment via tele, via teleconference, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom center of your screen. If you're in an Apple product, it's in the top right. If you are participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine to raise your hand now. For those participating by Zoom or telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called upon, will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do you have any public comments?
Yes. The city clerk's office has received one public comment via email from Marilyn Metzger. That's been made available on the city's website. It's been printed and has been made available to the public in the back of the council chambers, and it also has been distributed to the city council. I do have a couple of speaker cards, and I do see that there are hands that have started to be raised in Zoom. So I will start with those that are in the room. Brenda Augustin, if you would like to please come forward, you'll have up to three minutes to speak. Following Brenda will be Paul Carroll and then Helen Wayland-Bashaw.
Thank you. And at this point, I'm reminding folks that are on Zoom or teleconference, we have two hands raised. We'll give about another, we'll give it until after this speaker, and then we'll lock our commenters from Zoom. So if you're planning on speaking in Zoom, please raise your hand now. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Happy birthday. I want to thank you for placing a community survey online inquiring what the public would like to see in the new city manager that you'll be appointing. While there has been great success in many areas of Rancho Cordova, there are citizens who think their voices have not been heard or their concerns addressed. Top three qualities I and others request from the next city manager are logic, practicality, and collaborative skills with an intention to listen and learn from the citizens of Rancho Cordova who live here. This will require a city manager who realizes that citizens require adequate time to be notified and then review agenda items being heard at the council meetings. A Friday evening notification for items being reviewed on Monday is clearly inadequate, and that hosting events on behalf of businesses that present how they will change a neighborhood without inquiry from the citizens is not collaborative. It is dictatorial, undermining, and negates the intelligence of the public. Top priorities I and others request are enhancing Rancho Cordova to play a leading role, supporting the world focus on the care and nurturance of the environment, and supporting local industry rather than ones that increase carbon emissions and habits requiring storage and distribution to thrive, what many consider to be using and abusing cities. It has been proven that dependency upon outside sourcing leaves a city beholden to others rather than self-sustaining. We request a city manager who will live up to and support Sacramento County, the city of trees, by encouraging care of its crown jewel, the American River. Local companies tend and care for over eight million visitors to the American River each year. May the new city manager support commerce and financial gain for local citizens by following both the specific and general plans already approved. In reading and implementing these plans, the new city manager can guide interested businesses to fit in and complement our goals for a clean city that provides significant and generous access to parks, trails, play areas, sports fields, and open space classrooms, and greater awareness honoring and honoring of the historical and cultural roots of this area, including the Native Americans who came before the settlers of the Gold Rush. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Paul Carroll.
Good evening. I'm Paul Carroll. I live in Stone Creek. And I'd like to take just a minute or two to respond to some of the comments that were made by city council members at the meeting of November 7th and earlier meetings. We, residents of Stone Creek, have been told by council members several times, you knew the land that is now being looked at for warehouses was zoned light industrial when you bought. We knew what was represented to us by the developer, Elliot Holmes. Their representatives told I, my wife, and many of us in the neighborhood that BP meant office buildings and medical offices, no mention of warehouses. And light industrial meant the types of warehouses you could see in Rancho Cordova in 2006. Looking at projects now up for approval, we're told to look at the Z Spa and SAC County zoning of 2003, for that describes what can actually be built. When we do that, we see design standards and guidelines. That's what we are told to rely on. Yet, city staff and city council are willing to make exceptions or amendments to those standards and guidelines when it's in the property owner, that is, the developer's interest. Things change, we're told. The developers can't sell property that meets those stated standards, so they need to be changed. When setbacks specified by the Z Spa and Development Agreement were reduced, as they were in Alexander and Veranda collections, as well as around the Bold Beauty Project, it changes for us the nature of the neighborhood that we committed to. When a 20-plus acre commercial site is rezoned to medium-density residential, it changes for us the neighborhood and the commitments that we bought into. Things change. Yet, when we point out that things have changed since the EIR was written in 1998, we're told that the assessment of the environment impact has been completed, even if it was completed at a time when the 823 acres of Stone Creek villages were a rock quarry and rock tailings. Even when the traffic impact was based on a comparison of projected traffic against traffic coming out of the quarry, and future projections were based on Douglas Road being six lanes from Zinfandel Drive to Sunrise, that Mather Boulevard was going to be four lanes from Zinfandel Drive to Kiefer. Even when the air quality impact of that EIR was based on 1998 standards, which do not measure diesel particulate matter. And yet, diesel particulate matter as early as 1998 was declared a toxic chemical by the state of California, leading to cancer. And in 98, the EPA required the monitoring of PM 2.5 as part of air quality assessments. We are told design changes and project approvals are between the property owner and the city. We, as current property owners, have no direct voice in that. Because of that, we have to rely on the city, both staff and city council, to actively represent our interests. This is particularly vital when the projects are in fill, where hundreds of people have based their purchase decisions on existing requirements. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Helen Wayland-Bashaw.
Hi, I'm Helen Wayland-Bashaw, and I live off of the Rodeo Dray area. I want to tap on what was just said. Last meeting, and a few other meetings, James Garcia has come up, and he has actually talked about what the rules are, but yet the city is noted for being friendly to builders, and it's very obvious, because you've changed things for the builders. Last meeting, there was a talk about a subdivision coming in, and the subdivision was supposed to be three 1-stories to 1-2-stories. By the end of the conversation, it was said it's not feasible for the builder anymore, and we need to change it to 2-stories. And a comment was made by Linda Budge, and she said, she mentioned the Bay Area people would like these kind of houses. So my question is, are we catering to the citizens of Rancho Cordova who can't find affordable housing? And we're now built, now we're going to be the bedroom community for the Bay Area? What are you trying to do? You're trying to outprice the citizens of Rancho Cordova from being able to afford the housing? Put back the housings that are 1-floor height, or 3-1-floor to 1-2-floor houses, story houses, because you're making the market outreach the customer that you serve, which are citizens of Rancho Cordova. I am a little appalled to hear how frequently the rules change for the builder, but when the citizens bring up things that are important, like a 600-foot warehouse that's 40 feet tall, that now, we now find out in another meeting, has a wind tunnel that runs through it, we're still bowing to the builders. Go back to what was agreed to before that James Garcia has, on two separate occasions, has talked about what the city had agreed to, and get rid of that warehouse. That's not fair to the citizens in the area. It depreciates the value of their housing, and it creates more traffic in the area. It also creates the chemicals that are discharged from diesel fuel vehicles, the emissions that come out. I think that everybody here should be for the citizens. I hope our new city manager actually puts the citizens before they put the builders, because I've heard a lot about, let's bend for the builders. It's about time you realize there's just strong citizen population that's now getting involved, and we want, we want the city to work for us, not for the people in the Bay Area, and not for the builders who come in, rape the city of all the money, leave and leave us with the citizens with problems down the road that no one seemed to see but the people living in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to, right, that was the last one, right? So with that, we'll move on to our virtual attendees, and we'll start with James Garcia.
James, you've been unmuted, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Can you hear me okay?
We can, James, go ahead.
Okay, great. Well, this is James Garcia, who I've been mentioning, I guess, a couple times. I'm a resident here in Stone Creek. Can't make it tonight because of family commitments. But I also had some public comment about the last agenda item from the 11-7 council meeting. It was agenda item 10.3 about that nice little development. Paul Carroll had opposed it primarily due to visual variety and was in place and gives options for the aging and disabilities. It was also, he liked to see like a 50-year plan. The developer kind of claimed that single stories were not as desirable as 2-stories, kind of misleading again. There are those that want that starter home, they can only afford that. Linda also talked about her time in Stone Creek, where she had quarter-acre lot and 3,700 square foot home. That was huge. But now she's in Capital Village and states that she likes, there's only one single-story home that was back in 2007, 2008, and the rest are all 3x2 models. So it's kind of a big difference there. Distance learning had a massive impact on our lots and our huge yards. We don't need them anymore. Well, we still need them. Families still survive. Distance learning is over. If you haven't woken up and taken your kid to a school, you know that. David Sanders seemed to talk that he was in support of it and wanting a 100-year plan versus the 50-year plan, and that breaking up the homes was more attractive. But then he too also said that things changed over 20-year timeframe, and that we are without it. Terry, you seem to be frustrated all the time about us coming up with these plans here, on every single part, about being helpless about vested rights. It just is really disheartening to hear all the negative aspects that every time anyone wants to speak publicly, we're kind of shot down. I'm also getting tired about hearing about Capital Village is perfect, when in reality it's a mess. No one parks in their driveways. They're too short for their cars. Some people can't even park in the garages because their vehicles are too small, or too big for their garage. Most of the street is filled to the brim with on-street parking of the residents. This is going to prevent our lovely tree lighting ceremony from happening by the entire city, because there's nowhere to park to enjoy that festivities. The notion that everyone needs to have small lots, small yards, and is one that the entire city does not share. Where can single families go to afford a home? No new developments are creating starter homes. The entire city is becoming one big capital village if the developers continue to not follow the rules. Future apartments are priced at new market rates, which are more than many mortgages are. Work to get developers who will build a variety of neighborhoods, from starter homes to the mega eight-bedroom varieties. I don't care.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Eric Weingard.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I'd like to second the comments that Paul Carroll made in regards to the warehouses. But in particular, I'd like to talk about how you all will be making decisions on these warehouses that are coming up and how they're going to impact the community. It seems that the decision-making process is being relegated largely to the planning department as sort of an equation process. You add up all the boxes that need to be checked, and if they're all checked, then the process moves forward. But I would encourage you to take into account an equal part of what is the human process in that decision-making. We, the citizens, the residents of this community, are the human input. And so I would hope that you would equalize the legal lists that come to you through all of the age-old documents that are, in my opinion, way out of date, and equalize them with the human input. We, the community, do not want to become like inland empire with monstrous, high-rooftop warehouses right behind our backyards, so that's our view of the area. We don't want to see our community impacted by hundreds to thousands of truck trips a day with the noise and the pollution. So I encourage you to equalize the legal requirements that are set forth in outdated documents with the human input of the community, such as we're speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. See, no more public comment. We will move on to council reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Gatewood.
All right. So we launched Sprouts, which was super fun. Got to go out there, got to eat a bunch of their food. Cool vegan options, saw vegan sausages that looked amazing. It's just nice to see development-going infill projects that make the community happy. And it's good to see something that's really necessary. I think they, I warned them that they were going to sell out of food on the day they opened. They did not believe me. And then there was a line that wrapped around Rancho Cordova, I think, and they sold out of like aisles of food. People were so excited, because they also put a deal in that said that if you go there, you get this great discount. So like, not only did you have everyone showing up for that community, but then everyone that wanted a deal, like my wife and all her friends showed up and like cleared out the stuff. There was nothing left. So, but very exciting. All, like a ton of the citizens are from Rancho Cordova, and a couple of them went to school with Linda Budge's, I think, daughter, one of the managers over there. Then we had our meeting for the library. Budget, the library is healthy, thanks to Linda Budge, not to me, because goodness, that thing was a worst disaster.
No, you have to give Rivka credit for that.
Yeah, and Rivka, but you were there too. So I mean, like, I got to give credit where credit is due. So you and Rivka revived that thing, because I think that might have been one of the few places that might have gone down in flames. But now the meetings are like seven minutes, they're, the groups are great, and it's all moving forward, and they're opening up new cool features. They're trying to rethink basically how they use libraries, and they really want to put a library in Rancho Cordova. So they want to work with us to find out, they have, I think they have an extra $2 million bucks let aside for, and I'd love to partner with them. Probably can't do anything about it in my term, but hopefully in the next couple terms, we can find a way to open the brand-new Rancho Cordova library, maybe in a scenic area that would make sense that it would oversee the entire community. So, that's pretty awesome. And lastly, I don't know, Linda, if you know the guy that owns Kramer Fish, but it's the largest place that works on fish, and he is also a Rancho Cordova CEO, and is stretched across seven different states, and I just met him for the first time. And I think it's amazing how many CEOs were born in Rancho Cordova, and then basically set up their first office in Rancho, and then spread out, and now are all coming back into the city because of, you know, how we basically run the city. So, that was awesome. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have Councilmember Pulapati tonight, so we'll move on to Councilmember Sander.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, I went on a tour of Cordova High's career technical programs, I think you refer to those as CTE programs, and was really impressed with the variety and scope of the education that's happening at Cordova High. Just a couple of highlights. In one case, they have anatomy training tables. Now, this sounds like an odd thing, but you need to be able to teach anatomy to people who are interested in medical careers, physical training, biology, things like that. And these tables are a nearly three-dimensional look in a digital way. It's a very large, long screen, so it's almost as if you had an entire animal or human subject in front of you. And then, because they're digital, you are able to look down, peel away, look at certain systems, look at certain disorders, look at certain procedures of humans, animals, et cetera.
You mean you don't really have to dissect frogs anymore?
Well, I, I would argue that there is a certain aspect of biology that you probably only get from that hands-on activity, but this sort of general training, it can be done with these, this sort of equipment. You can stand them up vertically for demonstrations in the room. It is absolutely incredible. It turns out that the school got these as part of a grant. They have five of them, and they cost about $90,000 each. Even some local universities don't have access to this level of technology for training people in anatomy and physiology and related fields. So it is really exciting to see those deployed. And of course, I geeked out as a scientist, and they have a wonderful, a PhD who's there teaching them at Cordova, and integrating that with a variety of different curricula for different students. So that is an asset that we've got that no other high school has access to. It's really pretty remarkable. Almost right next door to that, in another remodeled classroom, is a group of students who are basically running a media business. So I walked in there and sort of immediately thought like, I need to think like I'm RCA. So I walked in there and sort of immediately thought like I need to think like I'm RCA president, which I am, Ranch of Athletic Association, and think about all the needs that those organizations, Little League, girls softball, track and field, whatever it may be, have to recruit people, right? How do you go out and recruit parents and kids to talk about what you're doing? It's media. So in this room, they can print you a big vinyl banner that's suitable to hang outside for a couple of years. They have the printer right there, the equipment right there, they do the graphic design right there. They can do flyers that you can hang on a wall. They can do mailers you can mail. They can do TikTok videos. They can do YouTube, YouTube videos. They can do an Instagram campaign. And they're basically being trained to work and there's different stations within the room. Kids sort of self-assigned to these groups, work there, have to, you know, maneuver through several of them during a, during a year. But it's like having a media department on demand and they do it for very little compensation, basically just the cost of materials and, you know, a little bit of stuff to upgrade. So I'm thinking RCA is probably going to go in big with them because of this particular need. And then that the kids are part of the target audience, they might be particularly good at designing, you know, video and graphics that will lure other kids and parents into having interest in those programs. If you've got something of interest that, that media professionals could help you with, they can also do website design. This is a group I think we should take advantage of. It is not. It's a different instructor. But it is really, really impressive. And again, that is something unique to, to Cordova High School. So that was impressive. We also saw engineering, food service, and part of the agriculture academies that are there, but I just wanted to highlight those two. I attended meetings last week for Regional San and Secog, at least those are the two I remember off the top of my head. There may have been more. We had a great Veterans Day celebration here in Ranch of Cordova, very low-key compared to our normal extravaganza. We had flags up and down Folsom Boulevard and we had a blood drive. So I thought that was kind of neat. It was sort of like bleed for a vet. Maybe the opposite of what would have happened, you know, in a previous situation for that vet. I did have a unique experience on Folsom Boulevard when those hundreds of flags are lining the boulevard. It's so impressive. You're driving down and you can just see, you know, fifteen, twenty, forty flags up along Folsom Boulevard. It really creates quite a patriotic display. And at one particular stoplight, I stopped and I saw a kid, probably in high school, walking along with one of those flags. He had taken it off the fence. So you think, oh, he stole him the flag. But he was walking, waving it in front of the cars. Cars were honking, people were waving. He was actually celebrating Veterans Day in his own way with, with the flag. And I just thought that was a very remarkable sight. I wish I could have captured that for everybody. It was an interesting way to interact with our population on Veterans Day, not our, not our usual way. The flags have become our usual way, but seeing someone sort of take it into their own hands that way, that was, that was pretty cool. And then, of course, I spent just about the last week in Kansas City at the National League of Cities event. So it was a big deal for me. I went from second vice president to first vice president while I was there, spent a whole bunch of time on the stage, talked to a whole bunch of interesting people. I don't know how many little speeches I had to give to different groups within the organization. But it was really exciting to feel the energy come back into that meeting. This is our first general meeting we've had in three years, because two were canceled due to COVID. And so people were really excited to be back and it, it felt really good. And the number of resources that are available both to us and Ranch of Cordova because of my involvement, as well as to cities in general through the National League of Cities right now, is pretty amazing. The infrastructure hub, if I was just to highlight one, is this incredible resource that the National League of Cities has put together to help small cities do transportation grants and to figure out what to apply for. Because in the old days, Department of Transportation, federal dollars, there were maybe eighty programs, sixty programs, something in that range, that cities could apply for and you knew them, they were sort of, they'd been there a long time. In the new bill, there's some debate about what constitutes a specific funding program, but it's somewhere between like three hundred and twenty programs. And the challenge is for a small jurisdiction, if an application costs you twenty thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars to get the experts to write and draft and get everything arranged to apply, a small jurisdiction can't do that very often. And you probably don't have staff, on your staff as a small jurisdiction, that is even technically capable of doing it in a lot of cases, all of the sort of work that goes into an application. So the National League of Cities has gotten together with some donors and created a pool of, I think it's fifty million to start. It's probably going to go up to a couple hundred million that is going to help small jurisdictions apply and probably have equal success with some of the larger jurisdictions that typically harvest those transportation funds. We have unprecedented levels of funding coming from the federal government in transportation. Oddly enough, it's still not enough to meet most of our local jurisdictions' needs. Some estimates say that the federal percentage now is maybe twenty percent of what the need is, but that's way up from five percent of what the need was previously. So it's a very interesting and dynamic situation and I'm really proud and excited that NLC is able to help so many small jurisdictions that way. And I've seen that on my, with my service at Secog. I know you have as well, Linda, that the small jurisdictions are really disadvantaged in getting grants. And this is a nice leveling effect. I will ask my colleagues to hold some time in your calendar for a year from now. So November of twenty-three is when I would be sworn in as president of the National League of Cities. And what is traditional is that quite a few people come from that jurisdiction to kind of celebrate that.
Where is it next year?
Atlanta. Yeah, so it's a great destination, actually.
Won't be as cold.
Ton of stuff there and, you know, you'll get to do some interesting things. Like one of the evening events was in the Chiefs locker room at Arrowhead Stadium in Kansas City. So if you've never been to like an NFL locker room and walked out on the NFL field and that kind of stuff.
So you're saying we're going to get to go to the Atlanta Falcons?
I don't know what they'll do, but I do know.
I felt a promise coming out.
Atlanta will do something, you know, on par with that. There was also, you know, we were in a grand old theater for the closing event on Saturday night. And the number of, you know, people ask, what, what's the value of going to that meeting? Why should people want to go? It's in part the education that you get from attending various sessions there, but more importantly, certainly for me, is talking to the other people who are in the same session as you, because they have the same interests as you. They're in the room with you for that session. Even if you don't get everything you need out of the session, just talking to everybody else in the room, you will learn so much because we all have the same problems. It's just a slightly different version of it. You know, if you're in Vermont, they've got snow issues that we don't have, but we still are trying to maintain roads and sidewalks and make safe routes to schools. So there's, there's so much to learn from that meeting. So I would encourage you, hold some time next year. Should be a lot of fun. We should get a lot of benefit out of this, including apparently that all my travel and registration for NLC meetings is now free because they're paying for instead of me. I get no salary for being NLC president, but they do give us a few perks like that. Yeah, very good. So thank you all for your support while I do this and I think we have a lot to gain in the process.
I'm sorry. I'm just staring off into space. You went to grab the mic and I just assumed you were going to start. And next, our report will be Vice Mayor Budge.
Yeah, congratulations, David. May I, I'll work on, given enough lead time, I can work on tickets to a Georgia game.
Oh, yeah.
If it's the right week, yeah.
I'll work on that. Okay, so it was my honor to, to once again do the, teach the Ranch of Cordova Leadership Model in Arts, Culture, and History. We always have a great time. We start off with the history of Ranch of Cordova and then we talk about the cultural history of all of the people who've come to live with us since the early seventies. And then we, we do a little arts tour through, through the city and do you know where this is and do you know where that is and, and what did you find that none of the rest of us have seen? And it's always great fun. Regional Transit met, but that was not a very important meeting. What was important was a meeting of the Real Estate Committee at Regional Transit. And it's just an ad hoc committee, but they are trying to find permanent locations or at least temporary locations for other, for regional transit facilities. So they're actually leasing buildings. The administration headquarters is going to move out of the drafty, leaky building down on the freeway and lease space at Eleventh and Q Street. And the facilities warehouse is going to consolidate several locations into something at Twenty-seventh and R. And actually, I should say that Eleventh and Q will be very convenient because it's really only about a block and a half from the light rail station at Thirteenth Street and Thirteenth and R. So it will be much more convenient to actually take the train there instead of having to drive downtown. They're still looking for three locations throughout the county to do rail vehicle maintenance and storage. And the one they had an eye on in South Sacramento, the Campbell Soup Plant, is not available anymore. They're looking around the Florence Station or the Florence and Franklin intersection vicinity, and they're looking out here at Aerojet. So those are still up in the air. Sprouts, I've been there three times, Garrett.
Can you walk? Is it that close?
We could. Actually, if we lived across the street still, we could walk, but, yeah. But then I'd have to carry home a huge bag full of stuff. So the Chamber put on their annual craft fair, which was absolutely delightful. If you didn't attend and buy stuff, you really missed a very nice event. Lots of local artisans displaying their wares, having things for sale and just a really fun evening. And then attended the Ranch of Cordova luncheon on Friday to hear what was, unfortunately, Donatoli's last speech here in Ranch of Cordova, or at least conceivably last speech here in Ranch of Cordova. And I was telling the senator's wife earlier that at least fifty percent of the eyes in the house were definitely not dry eyes. It was a very poignant evening or afternoon. It's been a delight to reconnect with Susan Skinner. Some of you will remember John Skinner's band. John retired as a navigator at Mather and was a very talented musician. And so they've done a swing band, a big band sound swing band for years. And even with the loss of John, Susan is continuing to perform. And currently, she is performing at a very unusual supper club down in the College Greens area, very, across the street from the, what I think is the College Greens Light Rail Station. It's called Thai Lotus and it is Thai and Chinese food and it's very similar to a supper club. The food is terrific. And if you go on their website, they have some sort of a musical event almost every weekend. And Susan has performed twice now and we've had a great time going to just sit and hang out and listen to her. And then I would ask tonight that we adjourn in the honor of a wonderful Ranch of Cordova gentleman named Ron Bueller. Ron was a local dentist here and a very generous gentleman. He's one of the founding members of Ranch of Cordova Rotary and he passed away recently. Brenda, I'm not sure whether Larry was a founding member or not, but this is all the same era as your late father-in-law and just a really lovely gentleman. So I would ask that we adjourn in his honor.
Thank you. We will do that. I'll be fairly brief. I did get a chance to go, I didn't see David there, but I got to go to Kansas City for about thirty-eight hours. It was a bit of a hike to.
I got a report on your presence, which was pretty funny.
I was there.
Yes.
Hopefully I didn't embarrass you.
No, apparently you were quite engaged and helpful. People were impressed.
Yeah, so I, I do serve on the National League of Cities Community and Econop Development National Federal Task Force Committee, whatever the heck they call it.
Federal Advocacy Committee.
There you go. And so I was actually in Atlanta at the other one that we've had this year. Wasn't able to make the March meeting though. They're always very productive. There were a lot of resolutions and other things to, to discuss. There was one really interesting working group that they're still recruiting cities to apply for and they're, at current, there are no cities in California. So it's a working group on inclusive economic development that I threw our name into the hat on, so we'll see if that happens. But I know we were kind of coming to the end of a two-year working group on supporting basic needs of post-secondary education or higher education students in our city. And we've been able to highlight and learn a lot about what other cities are doing around supporting college students, in particular, our Promise Program. And what that's really morphed into is a supportive basic needs around transportation, technology, books, and other things like that. So been some great work. I did attend one other workshop for a bit that I thought was at least worth mentioning that is also coming up a lot in that Community and Economic Development Committee, which is the issue of corporate landlords throughout the country. There's been a lot of talk, especially I would say in lower-cost communities throughout the country. David, I don't know how much TV you were watching, but I know when I was in my room watching, I think, the Today Show and in a period of an hour, there were five commercials of people trying to buy homes, just, we'll buy your homes at, you know, cash, you know, you don't have to fix anything. There were five commercials in an hour that I saw, which is just fascinating. I know because we are a very low-cost property tax state, at least as far as the increase because of Prop thirteen, that this is a very attractive place to have investment properties as well. And so we still see that a lot, but it's, but I, I think one of the, one of the big reasons that, that kind of stumps that here is the high cost of real estate in general in California for the most part. But it is becoming a massive problem of out-of-state, out-of-community landlords and the struggles that, that cities are trying to figure out to address that problem is just massive. And it's not just that they're out of state, they don't know who the heck owns them. And a lot of it, it's because it's Wall Street companies that are buying with shell companies and you, you can't figure out who actually owns said house. So that has continued to be a theme over the last few years, but definitely through the pandemic and some other things that, that with home values going the way they, they went, investors just swooped in on lower-cost communities across the South, the Midwest, and other folks. We had a two-by-two with Sacramento Unified, Sac City Unified School District and got an update kind of where they are with a lot of the things that, that they're working on. It, it sounds like their financial situation looks a little bit stronger than it has. We had some good conversations about things that they might apply for, for Measure H in the coming year around community grants. I know prior to the pandemic, we had actually funded what was going to be that superintendent's signature program, which was an opt-in summer school for students that were not on pace for, for their grade. And he, he had planned to do that through the entire school district and as soon as he announced the idea, they realized what their budget outlook looked like and it was the first thing he had to scrap in order to, to make the budget happen. But we're actually able to pay to pilot it at Abraham Lincoln Elementary. So we'll be looking to see if that's something that we can work with them in the future on. I will say, I also went to the Sprouts. I was there at six forty-five to say hello to all of the, the new employees are about to start. I agreed that it did not look like, with the line that was outside waiting to come in and literally the line of cars waiting to find a parking space. I, I, I think we're going to be in a very big hurry to get the rest of that parking lot finished because they need it. But at six forty-five, I did a ribbon cutting with my son and my wife there, right as the sun was pretty much rising. And we waited there for a sec to see if we were going to go back in and go shopping and we realized that was a lost cause because there were hundreds of people walking through the door. But welcome to Ranch of Cordova. It's another great shopping option. I, I would venture to guess that it, it is a unique shopping experience. It, it has an offering that I, I believe will attract a lot of people from outside of this area to go there. If you're a vegan or a vegetarian or a pescatarian, this is the store for you. It is, it is a really unique shopping experience. I know my office in Roseville is down the street from, from one and to have fantastic snacks and things like that, that, you know, you can bring back to share with your coworkers and stuff. But it is, it is a really unique shopping experience and I think it's going to be a really great draw in drawing people from not just within our city, but from outside the city that want that kind of product offering. Having grown up in Santa Cruz, that's the kind of store that people in that kind of community really like. And I think we have, you know, but I, I would argue that between our, our Waldorf-inspired K-12, you know, education offerings that we have over in the west side of the city and Sprouts, we're going to be attracting a very unique population that may not necessarily live here, but hopefully they'll consider moving here. not necessarily live here, but hopefully, they'll consider moving here.
We should also mention that they have a very nice partnership with Solborne Farm.
Yeah, yeah. And I know we've had some great conversations with the CEO about other charitable giving interests that they have, including the Sacramento Children's Museum, which I attended that board meeting that I'm the chair of, and will be holding a board retreat here later, early next month here as well. With that, I will move over to see if our city manager has a report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not really. I think everything has already been mentioned, so in the interest of time, I will give my report at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Do we have any public comment on the calendar?
We do not. Hold on, I just saw a hand that was raised. Yes.
Take a look.
We do not, yes, or we do not, no?
We do-
We do have a comment on the calendar, so let's, first, if we can bring James into the room so we can figure out what he would like to comment on.
Can you hear me okay?
Hey, James, so you're in the room. Wait, hang on, hang on, hang on. So what did you want to comment on?
Well, I wanted to comment on 9.2 to 9.5. Yeah, it's just a simple blanket-
Hang on, hang on.
I know, I will. Yep, I just wanted to let you know those.
9.2 to 9.5, we have, we'll go ahead, we can pull those items. Do we have anything else to pull from the calendar, colleagues?
So seeing none, I will move approval of item 9.1, 9.6, 9.7, 9.8, and 9.9.
And that would be all of them. Do I have a second? I have a motion by Budge, a second by Gatewood. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Councilmember Gatewood. Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye, okay. So we have moved and approved 9.1, 9.6 through 9.9. We will take public comment on 9.2, 9.3, 9.4, and 9.5. James, shall I have three minutes? Go ahead.
Okay. Yep, no, mine's really quick, it won't be long. I just wanted to kind of state that since this is the approval of lot line maps and everything for all four of these projects by Lennar Homes, that the planning department and city council is made aware that, hey, this is our final subdivision maps, and we're going to go ahead and stick to them. They have all their lots out there with the right sizes. Whatever setbacks are required, please have the builder finally follow them, because, again, I've been talking numerous times now on multiple other projects where you have approved modifications to that. I just really want to have a true builder who actually will build what they've agreed to right now. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. And again, not to belabor the fact, and I know that there are folks here that are concerned not only about this item, but others, but I wanted to see if the city attorney could at least make a clarification, because it's been brought up multiple times about our accommodations of development agreements or designs, you know, specifics and other things like that, that, again, not getting into other items that may come before this body at a future date, but in the instance where we adopt these and the developer now has a vested right with us, that our ability to, how can I put it? Our ability to apply changes that we want upon said owner or developer is far different than when a developer chooses to come to us to give that up or to ask for changes is much different, right? So if we wanted to change them after the fact, that's what, there's a lack of an ability to do that. If they come to us to request it, that's a much different conversation.
In general, the answer is yes, that in these projects and in many of the others that you've historically done in greenfield development, essentially, there was a bargain struck with developers where they made tens, in some cases, potentially hundreds of millions of dollars of investment in the city and large plans in exchange for the certainty that they would not have the basic rules of the city change after they started development. So they got what's called a vested right, they got development agreements, and they, you know, and they have the ability to ask to amend those, but you don't have the ability in general to require, absent their agreement, that the basic underlying zoning, land uses be changed. And in some cases, though, you know, there are slightly, there are ways that you can comply, there's a range of ways you can comply, but in some cases, the compliance is very specific.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on these items?
Seeing none, I will move approval of items 9.2 through 9.5.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Budge, a second by Gatewood. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye, thank you. Well, that will move on to consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Do we have any public comment on the calendar?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for these items, and I do not see any hands raised in Zoom for items on the consent public hearing.
Let me just check too. Nor do I. So I'll bring it back to my colleagues. Do we have anything that needs to be pulled from, actually, let me open the public hearing? We already know we don't have public comment. Colleagues, anything to be pulled from the calendar?
No.
Okay, so I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I will move approval of items 10.1 and 10.3, and note that 10.2 is being continued to the 19th of December.
Is that accurate? We're going to be continuing one of these?
Yeah, it says that. 10.2.
Okay, so, Mr. Parliamentarian, can we take these all in one motion?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Considering it's already agendas that way. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Budge, a second by Gatewood. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent. Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Thank you. We'll move on to items, public hearing items, and we'll start with item 11.1, the residence at Capital Center. Do you need to recuse yourself?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Nick Sosa, Associate Planner with the Planning Department. The project tonight is for the residence at Capital Center. It's for a major design review. There we go. So the applicant is requesting a major design review for a large residential project that consists of 177 two- and three-story townhome units and as well as a 240-unit multifamily development. Both residential components will have the clubhouse and onsite amenities. So the project is approximately 23 acres and located near the intersection of Kilgore and International Drive, directly adjacent to San Juan Soccer and the Folsom South Canal. The project site is also zoned office-professional mixed-use OPMU in our zoning code. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our applicant to go through the majority of the project description.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor Terry and members of the council. Also, before we start, I do want to thank Associate Planner Nick Sosa, Planning Manager Darcey Goulart, Public Works Director Albert Stricker, and the Public Works team. We've worked with them for the last year plus, and you've been great help, so anyway, thank you. Before we start, if we could, I want to give you a little information about ourselves and our team and in our historic activities at Capital Center. Is this it? Oh, thanks. Thank you. So my name is Rob Cole. I am with Capital Partners, or I'm sorry, Cole Partners Development Company based in Sacramento. We've been active in the Sacramento region since 1981. We are really solely focused in the Sacramento region, and we've been very active here in Rancho Cordova. We've built, again, background on us, we've built about 7 million square feet of commercial to include retail, office, medical office, and multifamily. A fair amount of that product was built right here in Rancho Cordova at Capital Center. Historically, we've been fortunate to be one of the larger build-to-suit developers in the region, and again, you can see on the screen, we've worked with several companies and other large users that are here in Rancho Cordova today. On this slide, we mentioned a couple, several projects we've worked on that you may recognize, starting with Zinfandel Capital Center, which is about 1.1 million square feet of office that we'll talk more about in a minute. The Geo Apartments in Sacramento, that sits right on the Highway 50 freeway near the UC Davis Medical Center in Sacramento. Creekside Ridge Galleria, which is in Roseville. Folsom Corporate Center on Iron Point Road also sits on the Highway 50 freeway, anchored in part by Kaiser and others. We also have some other projects that we're working on right now in Rockland. We've been fortunate to do a lot of work here with, in the city of Rancho Cordova. Unfortunately, most of it was done before the city was incorporated. So we did our first project here in the 1980s, but really, the bulk of the work that we've done here in the city, it was between 1997 to about 2003. During that time, we were fortunate to really be a major contributor in terms of a developer to Capital Center, and we've brought companies such as Verizon, helped with the VSP campus, brought Delta Dental to this market. Right now, many of these buildings that you may recognize, that most of them are along the International Drive corridor, are occupied by Delta Dental, VSP, Blue Shield of California, Health Net Centene, as well as the State of California. And we mentioned previously, but we're all, we've done a lot of work on the Highway 50 corridor in general, not just here along at Capital Center, but also at Folsom Corporate Center, and then Danoff of Bradshaw, South Bradshaw Business Center on Gady Road, and we're also just recently broke ground up at Folsom at the Folsom Corporate Center and apartment complex there. You can see some images there on the left side of the screen. So over the last few years, we've been trying to figure out what we're going to do here at Capital Center. We have been contemplating several things over the years, and several people on staff and others on council will know that because we've had discussions about things. In any event, we partnered in 2020 with the Groupie Company, also a longtime regional firm. The Groupie Company is based in Stockton, California. They've been around since 1966, but really, really got things going in the early 1970s. They're one of the more prolific residential developers in our region, and really, if not in the country. They've been active in Sacramento in recent years, and we're thrilled to have the opportunity to work with them here at this project. Right now, we're in the midst of planning about 1,000 multifamily units with them to include the project in Folsom I mentioned previously, and of course, this project here, the residences at Capital Center. It's a unique partnership in part because we have entered the multifamily arena in part out of necessity, because the commercial market has changed so dramatically over the last 10, 15 years, and particularly with more recent changes with the pandemic that we've all witnessed. And so kind of given our varied backgrounds, we think that we have come up with some unique ideas, and we're very excited about them, and we'll talk about them more here in a second as it relates to our proposed project here at Capital Center. The project location, you might be familiar with it, hopefully by looking at the staff report, but it's approximately 23-acre site located at the northeast quadrant of International Drive and Kilgore Road. It is adjacent to one of our buildings, in fact, the last building we built at Capital Center and completed in 2003. It's about 100,000-square-foot building currently leased to Delta Dental. That's one of four buildings that Delta Dental leased over a period of years and probably one of the last ones they're going to continue to occupy going forward. To the north of us is San Juan Soccer, and we know those, we know San Juan quite well. We've worked with them through their development, and we've been in very regular communication with them as we've worked through our plan here at Capital Center. But, you know, where this hits today, this is right, right in the middle of Capital Center in Prospect Park, which is where you have about 7.3 million square feet of office space, which is, really is the largest concentration of office space, not just on the Highway 50, but really in the Sacramento region. And so what we are talking about here today is a project that we think will be a tremendous fit with really is possibly the most important commercial hub or office hub in our region. And with that, I'd like to introduce Ron Metzger from LPAS Architecture here in Sacramento. He's one of several consultants that are with us today, and Ron's going to walk you through the project in a little bit more detail. Actually, Ron, before I, thanks for coming up, but I want to mention a couple of things, and I already kind of touched on it a little bit. There are some key objectives that we were thinking about when we contemplated this project. I mean, as you can tell, we've been involved in this land for a very long time, really since the early 1990s. And so whatever it is we were going to do here, we want it to be a great fit with the office park and also with the city. And so in thinking about that, you know, here are five kind of key objectives that we've come up with. But we are looking to develop something that is super high-quality, very walkable, but a rental community located on this mixed-use infill site at Capital Center. We'll talk more about the reasons for that in a moment, but really, this is about bringing more diverse housing opportunities to this community, which we think will be a good fit for Capital Center. Design a community that is complementary in look and feel to the existing office park through attractive modern architecture and landscaping. Ron's going to walk you through a lot of that. We also have an exciting part of this, which is a little commercial component, which is an outdoor-oriented restaurant, which is really designed to be kind of a fun destination-type restaurant concept that will be a fit, not just, of course, with what we're developing, but also the existing office park, the neighborhood and soccer facility. So family-oriented and should be kind of fun. We'll talk more about that, too. We talked about diverse rental housing opportunities, super important, we think, and it lends to this notion of live, work, play, which I think is important to the city and becoming more and more important in many of our communities. But, you know, important, too, because we view this as a prominent employment and retail hub in our region, and we want it to continue to be that way. So in our minds, an important way to do that is bring more people here. And then Ron's going to talk about this as well. Take advantage of the pedestrian cycling connectivity opportunities that exist here in the region. You've got some great things going on, tremendous assets such as the Folsom South Canal by trail, and so we're going to talk about that as well. But trails, parks, all of those things, again, looking for ways to connect this part of Capital Center with other parts of the Rancho Cordova community. So with that, I'll introduce Ron Metzger, who will walk you through the project.
Thank you, Rob. As Rob mentioned, I'm Ron Metzger with LPAS Architects, and we've had the privilege of working with both Cole Partners and Groupie Company on a variety of residential projects. We're very excited about this one because it really provides a very broad base of housing. We have 177 townhomes, and those townhomes range from two bedrooms to three bedrooms, so we have large units that will be very appealing for families. We have three-story townhomes, which is pretty traditional that you see with the two, they all have two-car garages, where you have the garage on the ground floor and living on the second and bedrooms above. and living on the second and bedrooms above. But we also have two-story townhomes, where all of the main living space is on the ground level. And those homes have private yards. So they're going, and the other ones have very large open space lanies. So they're going to live like homes with a lot of open space and a lot of space. So for a rental community, those 177 units will be very appealing for people that want to live in this desirable area of Rancho Cordova, but maybe don't have the down payment for a single-family home or just choose to rent. Those townhomes, well, I'll just go through an overview of the project. So we have 177 townhomes. We have 240 apartments, which are also very complementary to the mix of units that we have. And then, as Rob mentioned, a destination-oriented commercial space right along Kilgore that we think will be an amenity, not just for our residents, but for the overall community. So when we look at the individual pieces, I talked a little bit about the townhomes. They front onto Kilgore, and they go back to the South Folsom Canal. They kind of straddle both main entrances. We have two entrances to the project off of Kilgore, one to the townhomes, and then one to the apartments. The townhomes are arranged around central paseos that link to kind of a network of pedestrian paths that you'll see. And then, it has a central clubhouse and open green space that can be used by all residents. The architecture for these buildings is decidedly very modern and contemporary, and we wanted to do that because we want to appeal to residents for a very modern living experience. And so, we've got a combination of synthetic wood, so it'll hold up in weather, but it also brings a lot of warmth to the project. And then, cement plaster in a variety of forms that will also maintain itself over a long period of time. You can see both how we've articulated the buildings with a lot of movement, and also you can see that in perspective. And the buildings, we have a variety of sizes. We have buildings that have four units, and some buildings have eight units in a cluster. I mentioned we have two-story townhomes. Again, there's a garage elevation off of parking court, all with two-car garages, and then entries off of that side. But then, on the other side, there's private yards off of the living, dining, kitchen space. The other component that we have are apartments. We have 240 apartments. And unlike a lot of projects that you see today in the rental community, where there's a high percentage of studios, this is one bedrooms and two bedrooms. And it's kind of a 50-50 mix, but more than that, within that, there's probably half of each of those have dens. We all experience work-from-home, and so we've tried to accommodate that kind of lifestyle in this community. And so, the three-story buildings, they have a look and feel very complementary to the townhomes. They back up to the South Folsom Canal, but also off of International. And we expect residents to have easy access to the canal, which is a great community amenity, and we'll be looking for opportunities to create other connections if we can. And these are just some of the images. You can see we've got balconies that provide a lot of articulation, and then those become bay windows in some units, in different ways of treating the covering over those trellises. And these are all three stories, and again, a variety of 24-unit and 36-unit buildings. Within each of these communities, we have open space, we have recreational amenities, we have clubhouses. Each of these clubhouses have communal social spaces. They have swimming pools, they have fitness centers, they have coworking spaces. So even though you might even have a work-from-home environment in your unit, a lot of times, you want to be alone together and be able to go and work where you can see people. And so, these clubhouses will accommodate that. These are just some blowups of that. You can kind of see the quality of the interior spaces. Again, trying to create a lot of variety so that people can use them in a variety of ways. You can see the outdoor space. Not only do we have pools, we have outdoor living space, places for people to play games and entertain and barbecue. So we really are trying to create an environment where families can get together and enjoy that. You can also see in the upper plan, we're also having a play area, thinking that there will be children living here. And so, we want to make sure we have environments for all age groups to entertain themselves. This is a plan just showing the network of pedestrian walkways that link all the buildings together through the site and kind of lead you to the clubhouses in each of the communities. And central between all of the communities has that common green space. And that purple loop around that is about 1.85 miles. So we think there's a kind of a nice walking path. You could always extend it on the South Folsom Canal, and which is a great walking and biking path as well. And in the community, you can see there's connections both to International Drive and Kilgore. You have close proximity to the bike trail. You have close proximity to the other bike trail, kind of in the south part of that image, and close proximity to the Village Center and Village Green, which is a focal point of this part of Rancho Cordova. And actually, just out of the picture, off that bike trail and going down International Drive, and then south a little bit, you have easy access to that New Sprouts. So, as I mentioned, that we want a little bit of retail here. It's really off the beaten path. It's not on International Drive, and it's not on Zinfandel, where really kind of the retail hub is. So it has to be something that people are going to seek out. I think we're looking at kind of a food and beverage use, something that people will go out of their way to find. And we think it'll be a great amenity for residents here, but also for office workers and residents in the surrounding neighborhoods. And that's really our presentation in terms of our overview of the project. And welcome any questions that you might have.
Thank you. With that, let me open the public hearing and see if we have any public comment in the room first.
The City Clerk's Office has not received any speaker cards, but there are hands that are raised.
Yeah, we'll get there. Okay, so with that, we'll take the comments from the public in Zoom, and we'll start with James Garcia.
Hello, can you hear me?
You'll have up to three minutes.
Great. Hi, I'm James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I'm talking about this project because I also attended the community meeting that was held on the 27th. And they kind of went over why they were building residences in an office professional mixed-use zone. And the reason was, there's no demand for offices. Get it. But at the same time, right now, our zone is designed as office professional mixed-use, which does allow a residential component. But it is supposed to be primarily for larger office developments and business parks. Our zoning code specifically states that it needs to be 50% or greater for residences, and it cannot be a standalone portion. So, kind of off the beaten path, but it is not really allowed. The density for this, if you take the whole entire gross area of 22.811 acres divided by the units, that's 18.28 density per acre. But the fact is, there's over an acre for this nice little commercial, which is again, not office space. So it changes our density to 19.19 per acre. So again, once again, over our zoning code, our zoning code allows for up to 10 to 18 units per acre. So we're over-density for the wrong zone. It is designed to be a standalone project. Our staff report even talks about it, using the adjacent properties such as the Delta Dental and other areas as their justification for using this mixed-use portion to be residential. Once again, it should not even apply. There was a notice that said all concerns were done. I already told them that it was, it's in the wrong zone, and they kind of shook it off. So, there were very, very few people in there. The time for appeal was actually on October 20th, seven days after a community meeting. So that was a great way to have it hidden from those that actually decided to attend that meeting. We do not need that. The planned shared driveway for the restaurant, which isn't even up yet, that shares a soccer field entrance, that's going to cause lots of problems. That entrance charges for admission to the soccer field. You can have a backlog. Who's going to soccer? Who's going to the restaurant? The rent is market rate, once again, very, very high. $2,100 to $2,500 for the apartments, and the townhomes were even higher. That's more than most people's mortgages. How can people afford it in our city? It's a great design, wrong area. Hope you actually think about it this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Mitch Vinqueguera. Hopefully, I'm saying that right. Mitch?
Good evening. My name is Mitchell Vinseguera, and I'm a field representative for Carpenter's Local 46. I'm here tonight to speak on the residences at Capital Center project. I would like to request the city council hold the developer accountable and require them to choose a responsible general contractor. A responsible general contractor would ensure the highly skilled men and women who build this project will be paid area standard wages. This ensures that the people who build our community can also afford to live in our community. Local hire also helps to ensure money generated by new development stays in our community in the form of sales tax and property tax revenue. A responsible general contractor would provide their employees with health insurance. One out of four, or 26% of construction workers in California lack health insurance. That's two and a half times the rate for all California workers. These workers are sometimes reliant on emergency rooms, taxing an already overburdened medical system in our community. A responsible general contractor would have a developed apprenticeship program. Construction apprenticeship programs are a proven escalator to the middle class, training the next generation of California's construction workforce every year at no cost to taxpayers. Policies that require the utilization of apprenticeships develop a pool of skilled labor in the local area who can work on future projects. We at the NorCal Carpenters Union would love to have a detailed conversation with each of you about the city developing labor standards. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Doesn't look like we have any other public commenters, so I'll bring it back to the council for any questions for staff of development. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Okay, I have questions, probably for Ron. I have questions. Actually, just to get that off the table, personally, I see this as a really good location, because it's, we have an opportunity to replicate the success of Capital Village. We have all these jobs here in Rancho Cordova, and the places where people can actually walk across the street to where they go to work are not as plentiful as the jobs are. So this provides that opportunity. And so, I have no problem with the use. I do need to know more about the access. I know that Crawford Drive exists already. Curiously, there's a little street there called Crawford Drive. And it looks like there's another street being planned between the group of townhouses and the restaurant. But I'm really curious about the secondary access, the emergency vehicle access to the apartments, because you know there's a significant elevation change between the peak of the bridge and the intersection at Kilgore and International. And that elevation change doesn't actually equal itself out until you get down pretty much to the, say, the southeast corner of the Delta Dental building. And it's still, there's actually still a retaining wall in there. So I'm not sure how, what your vision is for either emergency vehicles or for pedestrians.
Can you speak to that? She's talking about the one.
Yeah, the international.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we recognize that that is a fairly Okay, a fairly steep driveway. There is a fair amount of grading in there, and we do not see that as a regularly-used vehicular entrance or exit. We do need to have secondary fire access.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah. But we do not see that as a vehicular, like, residents would not be coming or going out of that unless there was an emergency with fire.
Sure. Well, what about the bicycles and pedestrians, though? Didn't you say you anticipated there being able to access International and then get to the bike trail that way?
Yes, they can. It is graded so that you can access, there will be a man gate there where you can access the sidewalk and the bike lane and get over to the bike trail in that area.
Without having to carry your bicycle?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. It would be less than 5% to go through there.
The grade.
Yeah, yeah, the grade.
Yeah, well, 5% is a pretty, it's a decent slope. I mean, I just, you know, it just struck me as kind of odd.
And I think right now, it is steeper. We are sloping all the way back from the opposite side of the building. So we're going to kind of make it more gradual than what's there now.
So you're going to do more dirt balancing?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I was saying, you're going to have to do a lot of sloping on International. The grade now to where the street is, is, that's like a 10-foot drop.
It's about eight to 10 feet right now.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was wondering where the other entrance was, and then, once I found it, I'm like, oh, that's going to be a heck of a
Yeah. And so, again, as Ron mentioned, that's strictly, the one on International there is strictly for EVAs, but there is pedestrian access there. The primary ingress egress for the apartments is, as you mentioned, Vice Mayor Budge, on Crawford Drive, which is a private drive.
Okay. So I guess the only other thing, the only thing that I am not fond of, it looks like you're planning on gates, both on Crawford as well as the new street. And BDX is doing just fine without gates. I personally don't see the need for them.
Yeah. One of the, one of the things that, you know, as we talked with our partners about this, one of the things that we find, generally speaking, in a lot of these designs is that the residents are looking for, you know, a sense of safety, and so that is something that they will often look to.
Well, BDX has provided that safety by the location of fences around the swimming pool area, you know, by actually being on-site and then providing security when you walk into your building, as opposed to building a giant fence around the whole thing.
Yeah. And this one, particularly, if you notice, if we look at the townhome design, I'll flip to this next slide, even though it says "thank you." But the front of the entrances to the townhomes, for example, it's a little bit hard to see here because our logos conveniently cover this, but they open out directly to Kilgore. And so, there will be, you would have your door, landscape, and then they would then have a meandering walk that would then end up at the sidewalk to Kilgore. So you will have openings, you will have openings out towards the street.
As if you were coming onto Atherton or Tower Park Drive, something like that.
I'm trying, I'm not sure of the references, but
It's okay.
It could be, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Councilmember Sanders, I think you did.
I just want to follow up on that point. So actually, on Kilgore, it would be somewhat difficult to see that this is a gated, fenced
Correct.
Secure kind of place.
Right. And the gates will, by the way, be open during business hours. So, the new drive that people are mentioning, you would drive back in, that gate that would, where you, that would be in front of the townhomes, would swing open. But again, they'd be closed only during off-hours.
Right.
And so, they would be open during the day. And so, as you're saying, the buildings would act as the fencing, if you will, because they open directly out onto Kilgore.
Yeah, that's a nice compromise.
Yeah, it is nice.
I'm curious about the bicycle accessibility, in particular to the Folsom South Canal. Did you guys look at making a direct connection between your site and that?
One of the, well, we have preliminarily. It has been a little bit more challenging than it may be initially anticipated. Now, one of our draft conditions of approval that we've agreed to with Public Works is that we will attempt to work with the Bureau Now, one of our draft conditions of approval, uh, that we've agreed to with Public Works is that we will attempt to work with the Bureau of Reclamation for up to twelve months, uh, so that we have more direct access.
Permission from?
Right.
That's a good luck.
That's why we're limiting our time. So in any event, um, we, we would then theoretically, and you can see the green shape there. And I'll go back here. If you see sort of the yellow dot with the blue circle, that is the current, uh, bike trail access. But of course, that's accessible by, by the public in general. Uh, so we would have an access point somewhere farther north along our property line. Uh, and then we would have to then tie into the bike trail.
That's what would make sense, I think. Something in that upper right on this graphic, right?
That's what we would attempt to do. Now, as, as you go farther north, the grading issues become more significant.
Ah.
So that's, that's part of the issue.
So you'd, you'd choose carefully along there then in case.
Yeah. Well, but the streets go climbing as you, as in the northeast corner. Right? So it's getting closer to the, does, are you saying that because the trail drops off?
Yeah, so the, the, the difference in, in grade between ARP site to the trail as you go farther north becomes more.
It's going down, I see, to, to the trail, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so we'd be dropping down.
Because going, going up International to the east, you're, you're going up the hill.
Correct.
Yeah. I guess it does get worse.
Yeah, a lot of people will probably look at this and say, oh, well, you've only got to go out that gate and down the sidewalk to the bike trail, which is true. But human nature being what it is, you know, we like straight lines when we're moving ourselves. Um, and so often, you know, uh, in designs, we kind of miss that. I, I was at a restaurant in the city of Sacramento and they have beautifully landscaped the parking lot. Uh, you know, tree barriers and there's a nice sidewalk there. But on the other, on the sidewalk, if you're on the sidewalk and you've parked behind, you exit your car, you get up on the sidewalk. There is no break in the landscaping or the parking to get to the actual restaurant. It's just like.
Can you walk right through the landscape?
You've got to, you've got to wedge yourself between the landscape and the other cars.
Is that it railies in the south too?
It's a, it's the strangest thing. Yeah. It's just like human nature's not accounted for. Is there free flow between the townhomes and the apartments?
In, in terms of pedestrian access, uh, but in terms of vehicular access, except for emergency vehicles, uh, we would, for now, with the way it's designed, uh, vehi-, you know, vehicles in, in the townhome area would stay there and the same with the apartments area.
Does everybody have access to all the facilities?
Um, right now, the way we're thinking about it is the, the townhome residents would have access to that clubhouse and the apartment residents would have access to their clubhouse. But they're going to be very similar in terms of what's being offered. I think the one difference would be that we do anticipate, uh, because these will be two and three bedroom townhomes. Uh, for rent, we do anticipate there will be more families on that northern portion. So that clubhouse is a little bit larger on the north side because we anticipate, you know, maybe some sort of a kid's activities room or something like that.
Do you have a outdoor playground on the?
On the north side, correct.
I think that's what I saw there.
And then, and then there is, uh, there is, you can see that open space in the center between the two projects or the two portions of the project.
Can I clarify something? So is that northern playground fully accessible to both sets of residents?
Correct. Yes.
Yeah, it's actually, I, I really like this design in that you've got the flow of people through here. So if you're on a bike and you're living in the lower right-hand corner, but your job is upper left, you can get through the development to get there. Um, you can also take your kid to the, to the playground if you're living in the lower right. It's, it's really a nice design. What are the, uh, ceiling heights like in these buildings?
Typically, we're using nine foot ceilings, clear ceilings. Some will have larger, but yeah, it's typically nine.
Yeah, the, uh, you know, I'll give you a little history. We had, um, interest from Google once upon a time coming to Rancho Cordova. And they shot us down for two reasons. They actually shot the region down hard because of the quality of regional transit service. Um, that they found inadequate. We had the best location they saw in the Sacramento region here in Rancho Cordova. But the specific critique, uh, critique for us was you do not have enough upscale housing available for the sort of people who'd work at Google or another tech company. And what, what they tend to like are, they don't want a single family home. What they want is a condo or an apartment that's like a condo. In other words, highly amenitized, not much responsibility in terms of maintenance, right? Sort of that combination. And, uh, the sort of place where you could work from home when you don't actually have to go, go into the office. So we have that dynamic working here. We also have the dynamic of we've just been through a pandemic and downtown, they're talking about forty percent vacancies.
Correct.
In buildings. And the state is also talking about forty to sixty percent of their employees never going back to an office, which means we've got a potential glut of, you know, large floor plate office space in our, in our overall market and a huge change in how that space is utilized. And then on top of that, even before the pandemic, there was a trend saying these office parks that are, you know, building after building after building after building for, for jobs that people drive to are not the healthiest things. And some of those office parks were modernizing to, say, turn some of the parking into townhomes so that people have an option to live where they worked. And they would do something like take the frontage around three sides or two sides of a large office building, build townhomes there. So if you're on the street, it feels like a neighborhood, but there's actually a large office in back of these townhomes. But it gave people the opportunity to live somewhere. And if you think about Capital Village and its success, which was rezoned from being purely office, um, and has won national awards and has been extremely popular and successful, that is a version of this. This is a version of that.
Yeah.
So in my mind, all these trends I just outlined, you're hitting the right note for, for Rancho Cordova. Cause this is not a product that we have very much of at all. Particularly when you talk about a nine foot ceiling, highly amenitized apartment or townhome. That, you know, other than BDX, really doesn't exist.
Yeah.
Very much in Rancho Cordova. But yet we've got tens of thousands of employees, you know, many of whom are going to be interested in that sort of a lifestyle.
Yeah, and that's, that's exactly what we hope. Um, so you appreciate the comments. Thank you.
And, um, we should probably, um, point out, you said something about, um, this particular, um, Delta Dental Building probably be where, where they will ultimately be located. Um, as near as I can tell, um, of the existing, the current four buildings, they used to have six, you, you know.
Well, they had, yeah, they had, they had four.
But of the current four buildings that they've got, I think only this one and half of another one are occupied.
That, that, as I understand.
All the ones, the ones on Prospect Park, the, the other one on International, there's nobody there.
Correct. Yeah. And, and we do understand that ultimately this will be where they will be consolidating, uh, and due to losses of contracts and different things, but.
And remote work, I presume.
I think, yes.
Selling divisions of the company. My mother-in-law used to work for them and.
Oh, I see.
Or maybe she was relocated to Roseville.
I really like the, uh, the walking circuit on the outside. That's a, you know, you can amenitize that, I think, for not too much money. Uh, put up, you know, mileage markers, something like that.
Oh, yeah. And, and with, you know, we will be having, you know, a nice wayfinding signage and all those things. But so, yeah, thank, yes, thank you.
And a nice, it's a nice safe path. I mean, I sort of traced it out saying, if you're there with a kid in the stroller, if you're there with a four-year-old, what does this look like, right?
Right.
Um, could we go to the, the graphic that showed sort of the connection in the neighborhood? They had Capital Village on the left. There we go. Okay. So this is an interesting graphic here. Sort of center right, you've got the, the project we're talking about on Kilgore. Um, and if you look, like, see where the fire station is and there's that oddly shaped parking lot right there? If you draw a line over, you know, we could create as a city, if we had willing partners here, you could create a bikeway that sort of cut through this huge block of office and got people from this little neighborhood we're creating with this project all the way over to Capital Village.
People drive through it all the time, David. They come out of Tower Park and instead of going down to International, they go straight across that parking lot through the word that says office and over to Kilgore.
So they're already.
They're already doing.
Creating their own little connection.
Yeah.
I, I actually think a trail like that would be a benefit to that property owner, whoever it was. We might need to think a way to get a, a grant to support that, economic development or transportation.
Yeah.
But, um, and Linda, what's the trail situation once you get to the edge of Capital Village? Is that a separated sidewalk or is there anything on the street there? I don't remember.
Oh, we have separated sidewalks everywhere.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's, it's really quite, it's really quite nice.
It's not too bad to have to go out to International. I just thought one that went right through that big block of office would be particularly attractive.
They do.
Can I ask more of a, a technical question?
Yeah.
Go ahead. How do we, how are we able to build in a space that's been, uh, set aside for office space? And you have to have majority office space in there. How are we able to put this much housing there? What's the thing that lets us go past our zoning? Is it a law or something that I didn't know or?
It, it's essentially the question I asked Adam with, with the previous. The landowners asking us for a rezone. We have the ability to grant that. Or, or an exception, right?
Go ahead.
I don't know if somebody wants to answer, but.
So in the office park mixed-use zoning, residential can be a permitted by right use anywhere from ten to eighteen dwelling units per acre. Um, and it's an integrated development. So in this case, it's integrated with new future commercial to the north of the project site as well as integrated to the existing office with two, um, off of Crawford, two curb cuts into there. So there's integration between the proposed residential and existing office plus new commercial. So the code requires you to have some sort of integration. It doesn't say on this twenty-plus acres, you have to have fifty percent office and fifty percent residential. It allows you to build it all as residential, as long as you have that integration, which they're proposing.
Okay.
The zoning tables say it's a permitted use, subject to what she just said. So that when you just, you know, for, for detail, the, the, all of these categories are subject to, the particular zoning tables and then, then things that define the particular circumstances a- about them. And it's just identified as a permitted use in that table.
Okay.
It's almost like phasing it. And the first phase was the offices and the second phase is the commercial and residential.
Hmm. Again, and I wasn't here for this, but I think David just pointed out, it's what we, it's what Capital Village is. It, that was zoned for a big office park and somebody proposed housing there.
And, and for the record, I originally opposed it. Cause I thought we should have more jobs. That was two thousand.
Three?
Yeah, probably.
Four and five.
Two thousand and four.
So you take back your, your proposal.
Uh, by the, yeah, by the time I'd thought about it and, and educated myself a little about it, it made more sense. But my initial take was why would we give up all those jobs?
What about, um, are we, are we concerned about having the soccer club and that whole connection between it? Are we, um, and then coming into the restaurant? Or is that not?
The restaurant's going to need it for the public.
Why would that be a concern?
Well, just the sloping you guys were talking about and the, the kids all in there. Do we need to have some sort of better connection if the kids are going to come into this area to protect them?
That whole soccer complex is completely.
Open.
No, it's not. It's completely fenced in and closed when they're not there.
Yeah.
The entire thing is.
Okay.
Including the parking, I believe. You can't even get in there unless they let you in.
I thought they left it open all the time.
No.
The.
It's open when they're there.
The Rancho Cordova Soccer Club?
San Juan.
I'm sorry, I was, I was speaking into the future. Continue. I'm sorry about that. I apologize, right?
But yeah, no, it's, if, if there aren't kids present, that thing's locked and, and shut.
Okay. So Linda, you're a space planner. Is this would be an asset to the community to kind of drop this in the middle there?
Oh, a huge asset.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, as, as everybody has said, and as we hear every day, regardless of what media outlet you're looking for, additional housing is critical. Somebody's got to build more housing. Um, we have all sorts of, um, sort of pocket, uh, lots throughout our, our, um, whole central business district here where there is nothing that's ever been built there. And some of them need to be housing so that just as, as everybody has said, you can walk across the street and go to work. That's the success of Cat Village. And, and, and actually, um, both of the rentals that we had in there originally, uh, had people who worked for Delta Dental. Um, uh, one of the reasons that Elliot sold so many houses at Stone Creek so quickly was the fact that people could stand in the, in the, um, sales office and say, oh, that's my building over there. I can walk to work. And when, and when International, uh, or when, um, Independence at Mather, uh, was first, um, first opened their model homes, they sold a house a day for the first four months. It was the largest, uh, amount of sales that anybody, that KB had ever seen in any of their projects anywhere. Because the pent-up demand after the two and almost three decades of not having any new housing in Rancho Cordova just drove everybody to want to buy a house here.
Would, and, and another question, does putting, has this ever turned poorly on a community to add this type of housing in the middle or near its business district? Like plopping it there? Have you ever heard of it being like that was a bad idea?
I can't imagine why it would be.
And they, they agreed to build, uh, the bridge over Sunrise so that people can ride their bikes to the brewery over in the corner? Over in here industrial? That is excellent that you guys agreed to that. I appreciate that because I'd hate to vote no on this, knowing that the bridge was going to get built, so.
The bridge was built.
Oh, not just the bridge, but the bridge over. So we don't have to stop our cars anymore. We can just walk to the brewery that's on across the street. Just putting it out there.
Uh, keep dreaming.
Hey, you know, they're asking me for, um, okay.
I think, you know, Garrett, I think if it was, uh, low quality, that would be a risk.
Absolutely.
A- anything built initially is as low quality, you know, over time is probably not going to fare well. Unless you're in an extraordinarily high-demand real estate environment that stays that way. And not many places would do that. So I think that's why I was asking what, you know, I, I can tell from the architecture, it's high quality. How high are your ceilings?
Is that why you asked for the ni-, why nine foot ceilings?
Mm-hmm.
If you're looking for the quality of it.
That was the reason why I was asking that sort of a question.
Normal standard's eight. So the higher means more volume. It, it, it's usually a higher end.
I would argue that normal standard used to be eight or seven point six, but now.
Well, it's kind of, that's the minimum, I guess, is what you would say.
Nine and ten for ages.
Yeah.
But actually, um, it would probably have helped, um, um, you would probably find it very enlightening to, uh, Garrett, to take a tour of BDX.
I've been there.
Oh, have you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was one of the ones that got to claim that I did something when I showed up, councilman style, like, oh, great, got it. And they gave me a BDX thing with a, after you guys did all the hard lifting and got yelled at. It's amazing.
What's fascinating is to have a project like this come before us. And, I mean, we've had a couple of commenters, but I mean, that, that one took nine months of multiple workshops and, and frustration. I mean.
Do you have more comments?
Um, yeah, that also had a hundred percent. You were here for that vote.
I was?
Yeah.
That had a hundred percent community opposition. I don't.
I, I, I wouldn't say that's accurate.
A couple.
There were, there were quite a few supporters.
Led by.
Yeah.
Led by half a dozen people.
There was a very vocal group opposing it. There was, there was, there, there were a handful of people that came and spoke multiple times.
Two out of twenty or something at a meeting, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it was the same twenty people. But yes, there were, they cycled in, I would say, ten to twenty other people during that time that supported.
And in the end, we supported it unanimously.
No, we did not.
That was a four-one vote?
That was a three-one vote.
Because I was, I was.
Oh, my goodness.
But it was not a four-one.
Your predecessor must not have supported that.
No, he did not.
My memory is failing.
Yeah, from the, it was a three-one.
Okay. Are we ready?
Uh, what, do you have any more comments?
Last question and then I'll be done, I promise that we.
No, you're fine. I just, I, I.
I just want to know, is, because, you know, you're our planning professional. In what are the things that I'm not seeing that we have to have to make this successful? Because you said we need to have that, is the bike trail that you're talking about from the community, is that critical that we put in place? Or if we put this project in like this and is this something that we're, it sounds like an exciting project for the community?
I don't, I can't think of something that they have not included, especially if, um, if you compare this to BDX, which is our, which is our newest and most, um, um, kind of modern, what people are, are demanding.
Right.
In, in that kind of, um, lifestyle. You could, you could quibble about some things that maybe are planned in but haven't been mentioned, like the, um, the bank of lockers that they have that, uh, if you, uh, are getting a package, the package deliverer puts it in the locker and sends you a text.
Mm-hmm.
And you text it back and, and you get to pick up your package. But there, there's mention here of a bike room. There's mention here of a, a doggy washing area. They've got plants for kids. Um, it's truly, the only thing I wouldn't do, um, me personally, is the gate. Um, I see three gates and I wouldn't do that, but that's just me. I see three gates and I wouldn't do that, but that's just me.
I think the biggest risk would be if we already had a bunch of this and this was more. We already had a bunch of housing like this and we were adding more and more and more. Cause a monoculture of anything, just one thing repeated over and over and over anywhere is dangerous.
And we don't, and we don't really have any.
And we don't. And I will tell you that, um, we have a significant number of houses in Cap, or townhouses in Cat Village that are rentals. Because it wasn't that people bought them for, as rentals, but people bought them, lived in them for a while. And then instead of selling it, kept it and rented it.
And, and that's met the rental, some of the rental need.
Yeah.
Because there isn't this, this, this mix. Do you have any more?
Yeah.
Nope.
Okay. So, so I had a, I have a couple of questions. So one unique thing about Capital Village and BDX in general that I have some concerns about, especially on Kilgore and White Rock. Well, you're, you're not up to White Rock, but along Kilgore, um, is it's rolled curb. And you're putting houses in a little bit of a green space, but you're budding the houses up. That, that really is your, your buffer to the project. If, if, if you go and you look at going down International where we see significantly higher speeds, uh, higher than they should be, especially at night, um, when there aren't people there. You have that higher hard, uh, non-rounded curb. I don't know what that's, what that's called, vertical curb. You have the same thing at, at BDX, although you have a bit more of a buffer in most parts, except for right along the, the park area at Village Green, where the buildings are kind of offset anyways. If there was a way to have an accommodation around rolled curb there and having that corrected in, in front of the project, you know, I, obviously you wouldn't be responsible for the soccer area and stuff. But again, for the soccer fields, they put the parking in front of that. They didn't, they didn't push the, the, the fields all the way against it. So if there was a way to accommodate that, I would also, I have been very consistent, um, in agreeing with Linda when it comes to, 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 uh, to gates. You make a hell of a change in the fact that they're open during the day. So you're talking about having them closed only at, what time are, are you planning on them actually closing?
I, I'm gonna guess that business hours are gonna be sometime between eight and five, eight and six.
Okay. If. I can't even believe I would do this because normally I would just say, I, I don't like gates at all, anywhere. Um, and we, we went back and forth with a senior development in the south area where I was almost adamant that I didn't want them at all. And, and, and to me, it, it, one, I think, I think it's a false sense of security. There, there's ways to get into any development and anything. What gates say, it's not about the people that are living there. It's what it says about the people that already live here. And the fact that, that, that you fear your neighbor so much that you feel that you need to have this false sense of security. If you could make a commitment that those would close at, say, eight o'clock, I'd probably be just fine with it. If, if there, if there was a way to make a compromise there. Because every other time that we've talked about this, nobody's ever suggested business hours. And between restaurants open and other things like that, people getting cars in and out. And, and I get that you could have overflow parking and things like that. And, and if we had to revisit it because it became a problem to move it back to five, I'd be open to that.
Maybe it depends on daylight savings time more than a, a finite hour.
At sunset? I don't know. I, I, hopefully you could work it out with staff, but I, I'd really like to see that, that period extended a little bit more. And again, with the understanding that if the residents and the management believe it to be an issue in the future, that that's something that, that staff and other folks could, could, could be open to, to a change in the future.
If I could make a comment.
Go ahead.
First of all, uh, under our conditions of approval, we need to get rid of the rolled curb. So just.
Oh, you are doing that. Alrighty, alright. Then, then you fixed it. Great.
Second item, informally, we've asked Public Works to look at potentially moving Kilgore to two lanes of traffic with a turn lane and expanding the bike lanes.
Mm-hmm.
And I, the indication is that they cannot do that necessarily, but that when the.
How would you do that, getting, getting rid of the, the suicide lane?
For, you know, when you're reviewing your traffic element, that that's something that you might be able to look at.
Well, but, but I, I want to understand what you're asking to what we said that we can or can't accommodate. Cause there's a, uh, well, we're doing all that construction right now to replace the pipe underneath it, International and Kilgore. But you're saying just north of that, that we can't accommodate the extra turn lane? Albert?
Good evening, Mayor Terry and members of the council. Kilgore Road is currently one lane in each direction with a two lane, with a, uh, with a two-way turn lane. Actually, excuse me, it's two lanes in each direction. Yeah, I misspoke. I apologize. Two, uh, two lanes in each direction with a two-way left, left turn lane in the middle. And it's shown as four lanes in the general plan. So we do need to re, it isn't as simple as just changing it without going through, relooking at the general plan as a part of this project.
Okay.
We are embarking on a general plan update. So as a part of that, we'll be able to evaluate Kilgore Road, um, and, and look at possibilities for narrowing in the future.
Actually, it's curious that that's the stretch of Kilgore is the only stretch that's four lanes. It's two, uh, north of White Rock and south of International.
And it's providing that exactly as you said.
It's south of International? It's, it's not two lanes until it hits the neighborhood, until that stop sign?
It is two lanes.
Right, okay.
From International South. And it's two lanes from White Rock North. But it's just this one stretch.
And you're absolutely right. It's accommodating, accommodating that connection between International and White Rock Road.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, it, it's one lane each way north of White Rock.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Okay.
It's only two lanes for the stretch we see in this graphic in front of us.
Yeah.
From International to White Rock. That's the four lane segment.
Four lane total.
That's the four lane segment.
No, no, but south of International, it is, it is also that until you hit the, that stop sign at the bottom. So where, so where, where this arrow ends on the bottom, that's two lanes each way, isn't it? I'm pretty sure it is. Right? No?
Albert, do you know what it is?
I'm not recalling, I'm not recalling for sure, south of International.
No. No, because we've got the pedestrian crossing and everything in there now.
Hmm, okay.
We did, well, we did.
I'm glad to hear the, about the rolled curb. I, I would be very interested. As somebody who, again, adamantly opposes gates for anything, if we could extend that operating hour a little bit further than just five o'clock, with the understanding that if you guys think it's a problem later on with your operations, that that's something that we could, we would be open to. But I, I would say, I would say in general that looking at this, uh, you know, a lot of the comments that my, that my colleagues just said, these are the kinds of projects that we're gonna need to start putting into the business park, um, that, that we, oh, go ahead, Albert.
May I mention one more thing, Mayor Terry?
Sure.
Um, just along the lines of the pedestrian improvements, the, this condition, this project is conditioned to install vertical curb all along its entire frontage. Um, and as Rob mentioned, and also north adjacent to the soccer club, that's all vertical curb as well. They had a similar condition to convert it. So we have vertical curb along that entire section. Uh, we have a vacant lot north of the soccer club. And if that comes forward with a future development, that would also be conditioned for the vertical curb. And one other pedestrian improvement that's, um, that, uh, if, if this project is approved, it's conditioned to perform is to include also a pedestrian signal crossing Kilgore Road. So understanding that this is a four lane road and very straight, um, we wanted to make sure that we, we accommodated future attraction to this location with the restaurant, as well as the residents of this development may desire to go to some of the other amenities or to work around Rancho Cordova.
No, that's.
And so right there near the restaurant, there's a pedestrian signal there.
That's great. Yeah. I, yeah, just in general, I mean, we have this rolled curb throughout the business park. And I swear, somebody sitting waiting for a bus here on, on White Rock. Like, I, I get rolled curb there. If you, you mess that up, you end up into, into a parking lot. But that much pedestrian access there, like we, that, that, I'm, I'm really glad to hear that. But no, my, my, my reaction to this is these are the kinds of things we're gonna need to do in this business park. That, that, the, of the vast majority of the, of the employers here, uh, while we're adding, you know, almost 2,000, uh, workers, you know, highly paid workers at Solodyne, we're adding 1,800 at UC Davis. And a lot of those are going to be in person and that's great, but a lot of these companies, their employees can be remote probably forever. A lot of the insurance companies, a lot of the, the other call center things and, and things that we have here. And so if we don't add residential density to these things, the restaurants, the shopping, the other things that, that have survived here so far, wi- without more residents close, it's gonna continue to, we're gonna continue to, to see those, those other retail needs and service needs struggle.
You guys gonna put any solar in? We're, we're required to do something related to solar, but we will be participating in the solar, uh, the smud solar shares program.
So, so yeah, so I, I, I would just say that I, I think this is, this is a, a great project. And it's fascinating to look at this and think just a handful of years ago, you know, this was our one last great spot to have a commercial, you know, big office park, land the, land the tech company or somebody else. And, you know, the times changed and the needs have changed. And so I, I still look, you know, now that we're, we punched a hole into Real de Loro, you know, our future office park needs and stuff could be met out there and in other places. So, um, I think this makes a lot of sense. I think it's a, it's a good looking project. And, um, and I think it meets a need, especially from the rental market where we have a lot of young professionals that are move, that, that are moving to this region to take jobs in this city, but they're moving to midtown. And they're moving to other places because we don't have these kind, enough of these amenities. And I know one of the commenters said, you know, these rents are too high and, and that doesn't, you know, you know, people, people can't afford it or aren't gonna be here. BDX sold for what? $300,000 a door a handful of years ago. And if it sold again today, I bet you it'd be even more. And they're getting these rents and we've seen it.
They are.
And not for BDX. Throughout that pandemic, the number of restaurants we would have lost over there in Capital Village and near Lowe's and everything else without people with disposable income that can walk to get, take out and do, and do those other things. We wouldn't, Amos House wouldn't have survived and Noodles wouldn't have survived and a bunch of other ones wouldn't have. And it's these types of developments where we add this kind of densification, frankly, with people with disposable income. It's how we're gonna get back some of the businesses that we've lost, so.
That's exactly right. This is important to maintaining the health of Capital Villas and all the retail that's happening there.
And, and even the retail along Sunrise Boulevard. I mean, you want to make sure that we have other restaurants and other things like that. These are the, these are the users of those things. So with that, if there are not any other comments, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
So I will move that we find that the, um, environmental determination is adequate and appropriate. And then we adopt the resolutions for a tentative parcel map, tentative subdivision map, major design review and unified sign program.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion by Budge, a second by Sander. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulipati is absent. Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. The item is agreed to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing dirt moving soon.
Thank you for bringing us that project. And I also want to congratulate you guys on, uh, on switching from office to residential as the, the needs shift in our community. We appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. So with that, we'll move on to, uh, regular calendar items. Uh, we only have one tonight. Uh, and that will be, uh, 12.1, an update and direction on workforce recovery program. Notice of funding availability proposals received.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is Amanda Norton, Economic Development Manager for the city. And next to me, I have my colleague.
Ashley Kobe, Management Technician.
And the little green light goes on. There you go.
Ashley Kobe, Management Technician and Economic Development.
Uh, for tonight's agenda, we'll be covering a little bit background of context, um, on our workforce development program. We'll be discussing all of the proposals that we have received. And we'll also be discussing a proposal for a workforce tracking project. Um, at the end of the presentation, we'll be looking for some council considerations and feedbacks on the proposals presented as well as, um, the workforce tracking program. And then we will be discovering next steps for this item. A little bit of background, uh, we had provided a workforce NOFA, which is a notice of funding availability that was to be funded by Measure R and ARPA primarily through ARPA funding. Um, the goal of our workforce program is to help our residents reskill and upskill. We received 10, um, proposals and we were, um, originally given a budget of a million dollars. Um, what a workforce recovery program is, is the opportunity for various providers to provide our residents with classes and trainings, in which case they will be earning a certificate that will label them to get new skill sets, which ultimately will either help them increase within their current draw, their current, uh, career field and/or pivot into a new career field. Um, as our, um, previous presentations tonight, we do recognize that we are one of the largest employment hubs out of downtown Sacramento and really want to be able to additionally help our residents, but also help our existing businesses with their workforce needs. Uh, very fortunately, we received 10 proposals under this notice of funding availability. Those ranged very widely in terms of medical, manufacturing, the trades, the technology ecosystem and wraparound job placement assistance. Uh, we are very fortunate to receive some amazing proposals. The most difficult piece is that we had over $4 million of requests with a budget of $1 million. So in an effort to rate, um, all of the existing proposals, we had a team made up of city staff, a member of our CEIF team, a member from our Chamber of Commerce and a member from Valley Vision who helped us rate all the proposals. Ideally, every proposal will have a large emphasis on being able to assist their learners in job placement. And we looked at that as very high in our rating system.
So we'll go over the proposals received. Um, as Amanda mentioned, we received proposals across industry sectors. We had six in tech-related trainings and four in the trades, manufacturing, healthcare and career center services. You'll see, you'll see 11 training providers on the list. This is because we included wellspaced, which was adopted previously due to program timelines. As you'll see here, this outlines the initial funding requests by all of our providers that submitted requests to the notice of funding availability. Um, and with the $1 million budget, we were over budget and asked by $3 million and change. To go into detail on the take tech training proposals, um, we consolidated them kind of by industry to just review and give you guys an idea of what the asks were. Um, as you'll see on the side, along with the descriptions, we also included projected job growth from the Bureau of Labor Statistics as a way to visualize and standardize the program's potential impact for our residents. To give a quick overview, um, of the proposals we received, the first one, we have Bay Valley Tech. They're an online training, um, in digital skills to prepare learners for entry level positions as digital designers and digital marketer, marketers. The proposal also includes paid internships for all learners at $25 an hour for 15 hours per week. Uh, they also included a six month of career prep and placement, um, and wraparound services after the end of the training programs. The next up is Cyber Proud. They're another online training program, um, in infrastructure support or cybersecurity to prepare learners for positions like information security analysts. Cyber Proud will provide access to career readiness workshops, resume prep, job placement, job fairs and work-based learning opportunities. This proposal also includes two $500 stipends, one at three months and the other at six months post-employment. DP Global Solutions is offering online training in Salesforce Administrator Certification with six months po- post-program hiring support and mentorship. They also provide laptops if learners need them to complete the program. General Assembly is a software immersive course, which includes a $3,000 living stipend and also includes career coaching and hiring support. This is to train software developers. Udacity is another online training program in business analytics or digital marketing with career coaching and hiring support six months post-program. Women in Data is another online training program for data analytics. They offer resume and employment support, direct partnerships with eight employers for apprenticeships or internships for a minimum of 25, 25 of their students. Laptops are also offered as a stipend for learners who may need them. The other training proposals that we received, um, the first one was Char, from the Charles A. Jones Center. This is a manufacturing training proposal. They're proposing forklift operator, material handling and logistics, welding fabrication and intro to manufacturing. They also included placement bonuses and transportation stipends, um, to assist learners in traveling to and from the in-person training. FCCP or Folsom Cordova Community Partnership, um, is offering case management and support services to offer residents assistance in finding a job as well as training scholarships for placements in need and wraparound services like childcare, language supports and technology supports. The next up is Northern California Construction Training. Um, they have a training program for over 200 construction trades with a focus on job sites. They have a training program for over 200 construction trades with a focus on job site safety apprenticeship programs with local employers, and they also are offering $1,000 placement stipends. North State Building Industry Association is offering work readiness training with a focus on energy, construction, utilities and manufacturing industries. Stipends to offset the cost of clothing, equipment, childcare and transportation. And the last up on the list is WellSpace. Again, this is one that was already previously decided on, but they offer a six-month paid medical assistant training program. All students are employed while completing the training.
As you can see, we had a wide breadth and depth of programs that were offered. And really it covers any one of our residents, from those that may have higher barriers to those individuals who probably just need a few new skills to add to their portfolio to be able to change and pivot into careers. So as such, we have a very wide breadth and depth of programs that are presented to you this evening. You will be noticing that on the bottom right, it says 1.8 million. And having a conversation with our finance team, we realized with some additional ARPA dollars, we would be able to fund more programs under this initiative. We did ask, as you will see from the initial funding to the recommended funding, that every one of our providers, we went back to and figured out where we could reduce those programs to be able to provide a wider breadth and depth to our residents. And in doing so, everyone came forward with reductions across the board to be able to still provide services to our residents. And then I'm going to move on to the next section, but we will be coming back to this so the council will have an opportunity to provide feedback and recommendations.
So from our first go around with our workforce programming, one of the outcomes or one of the lessons learned was the need for long-term metrics tracking. So a way of standardizing and benchmarking all of these programs and standardizing the measurements that they are reporting out on. So staff recognizes the need for this in support of our initiatives, not only to see the immediate effects, but also the long-term effects. So with the training program, six months may not mean a career change or placement for an individual, and we recognize that. So by tracking them for two or three years, we're able to see their career trajectory or where that training has led them, if they've layered training, and it kind of tells a broader story on what we're trying to do with our initiative here. So as such, staff will look to SSL Innovations to provide and ensure that data shared is accurate and objective and the data is relevant and meaningful and the shared data is accessible and consumable. They will create a standardized reporting method for all of the workforce development program training providers through surveys based on benchmark criteria. They will also be administering outreach to participants through their training as well as post-program to track long-term placements and trajectory trainings. And when we talk about the long-term tracking, it's not just simply putting somebody's email out there and sending them a follow-up email. It's phone calls, it's text messages, it's really getting those responses. Because as we know, engagement weans after they've completed the training. So not everybody is engaged. This is another way that we can ensure engagement in the long term. When we speak about milestones and outcomes, this is the data that we provided in our notice of funding availability. And this comes from the Employment and Training Administration from the Department of Labor with the U.S. National Workforce Program. So in the left-hand column, you'll see employment and training administrative workforce development programs and their benchmarks. So currently, they have 92% of participants who started the program, complete the program. Sorry, that, they have 92% of participants who engaged with them start the programming. In the second category, you have participants that completed the training at 47%. You have 37% of participants completed the training and obtained a certificate or credential. 24% of participants have entered employment post-training in an unidentified, un-identify, undefined.
Got it.
Career. And then you have 17% of participants who have entered into a training-related employment. So with those benchmarks for the national average, we created our own target goals. And so you'll see that we're looking for 100% engagement with participants who start the program. We're looking for 75% of our participants to complete the training, 50% of our participants to complete the training and obtain a certificate or credential, 35% of our participants to enter in employment post-program and 25 of our participants to enter into a training-related employment.
So this is quite a remarkable slide. You and I attended the, the Future of Work Seminar in Utah. The, the meeting that went over several days of people talking about jobs programs in the future and what was the role of, of cities in that. And there were lots of references there to well-funded programs that weren't very successful. Like that was a norm and we had to be careful to avoid that. And now I see, because no one there that I'm aware of presented numbers like this. If this is the national average, a 17% success rate. Ouch. Oh my goodness. That is, that is shocking to me.
That was my concern that I expressed to Amanda. These, number one, our goals, it seems to me, are way too low. And number two, I mean, it's like, these people are getting free something or other and yet it seems that they don't value it and they don't take advantage of it.
For a little local context, in 2016, Sacramento State had a graduation rate in four years of 9%. They have now done extremely well and they are now up to 25.8%. So if you look at the completed, the graduation rate here, we're looking to double what Sac State is doing. For Folsom Lake College, those folks that graduate in less than four years is 4.57% and those that graduate in four or more years is 1.92%. So it's.
The definition of what is graduation at a community college is very, very substantially though.
Yeah.
Whatever happened to going to community college for two years?
So yeah, that is the graduate in less than two years means that you graduated.
You said four, but yeah, I know what you mean.
Well, less than four, but that's, that's their benchmarks of how they presented the data.
But again, there's, there's a, there's a myriad of students that go to a community college that get something other than an AA degree. Or just went there for a class. So that, that, that's always been, ever since I went to a community college, that's always been a fairly murky topic as to what is considered graduating. Because you can, in theory, I think it's still true, you could, you could transfer to a CSU or UC without an associate's degree. You can meet the ADG requirements and never get a degree.
I'm not sure about that.
Used to be true.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure about that. Because both, both of my kids transferred to, transferred out of.
You, you can, but you don't have to get the degree. Is there more of a presentation?
Sure. Yes, so there's, we recognize that a lot of the folks that enter into our programs either A, have higher barriers, either with transportation, childcare, housing, language, et cetera. Or are those that are just needing, already working full-time and just need a little extra certificate. So before you tonight are these two items. One is to receive council feedback and direction on the workforce proposals presented. And then the recommendation of an approval of a contract with SSL Innovations for the workforce and data and tracking. And Ashley and I are here to answer any questions, and I believe most of our applicants are either in the room or on Zoom this evening.
Okay. Let's start with, do we have any public comment for this item?
The City Clerk's Office has not received any speaker cards, but I do see a hand raised in Zoom.
Let me get to that.
Hands.
I think we have a few. So we'll go ahead and take Natalie, or Natalia maybe, Garcia first.
Hi there. Yes, it's Natalia Garcia. Thanks for, for taking my comment. I'm coming to you here as a Senior Vice President of External Affairs at General Assembly, which is one of, in full disclosure, one of the grant proposals that you're considering tonight. But more so a Sacramento resident, local and really excited to see this work continue after a successful engagement last year with a similar cohort and arrangement. Wanted to just quickly provide a little bit of clarity on some of the outcomes numbers that you all were so thoughtfully commenting on just a minute ago. Because I think it's, it's important to, to note that both, where generally, General Assembly is concerned, you know, we've been doing this work for over a decade and have a 97% job placement outcome rate. So we, we've got this down to a science and we know that particularly that stipend, that $3,000 stipend that was mentioned earlier is particularly useful for those who are juggling some of those challenges that were mentioned. Childcare and the like. So that is included in the proposal here. I also think it's, it's worth, it's worth noting that because we are familiar with the community and the local partners, we have support from many of the local chambers. We know that our virtual curriculum is pretty effective when it comes to finding remote work. Even in this environment, as you can imagine, you know, there's, you all have seen the headlines with, you know, tech companies laying off a number of workers. This, this particular program, our software engineering immersive, was selected as part of this proposal because we have seen this been the most resilient program for our students despite tech layoffs. So just thought that was worth noting. And then of course, you know, like I, I think, you know, as sort of a, just so you all have a little vote of confidence. You know, I, I'm part of the Subcommittee for the Office of Workforce Innovation and Economic Development for Mayor Steinberg. We've also run this program in Sacramento with the help of GSAC. So if you have any questions, just wanted to kind of throw my name out there and, and offer some of that additional data. But appreciate your consideration and look forward to the discussion.
Thank you. Our next commenter will be Jeff Armstrong.
Good evening all. Yes, my name is Jeff Armstrong. I am with Northern California Construction Training, RNCCT. And looking at the results, looks like we are one of the two who are not recommend, getting a recommendation for funding. And I know our number was way out of line with a lot, most of the other numbers that were submitted. And I think that's just because we saw a great opportunity, decided to shoot for the moon and the stars. Talking about, you know, placement rates and how low they are in the national average, you know, we are over 80%. We've got a lot of contractors in the, in the Rancho Cordova area. And it's just, it's, it's disheartening, it's a little heartbreaking to see us getting nothing because I know it's going to be a missed opportunity for a lot of young men and women looking to get into the construction industry, which is set to grow at over 27% over the next five years. It's going to be just a lot, a lot of work, especially with a lot of people retiring, looking to bring in new people. So I, I just wanted to go on record as, as saying that. And I, I do appreciate the time staff spent with us and I appreciate everyone there tonight. So just wanted to say that and, and thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm assuming that's our friend Neil Reedy. And Planning Commissioner.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I think this is one of the greatest programs that you guys started after the promise program. And I think the earlier application that you guys were talking about, creating the new housing and how the tech industry is looking for those housing. I think some of these programs really, really helps attracting the new talent to our city and buying those houses settling in our neighborhoods. And coming back to this technology program, and as I personally, I strongly believe technology is the medium to upbringing the lives of the underserved communities and especially women and people of color, any minorities. And most of the applications I went through, every application has a lot to offer and these are the great programs. And again, I just want to appreciate the economic development team, you know, they did an awesome job. I think Dr. Sanders mentioned that metrics, right? I go through those metrics almost like in a, in my job every day. And again, looking at the numbers, maybe it looks low, but when compared to the national average, I think our program is really, really successful. And I was also mentored to the, the current program on the DP Global Solution, the Salesforce side this time. Last time I was, I was also supporting them on the Amazon Web Services. This time, I provided them a more insights about how the cloud implementations is really taking the, the new job market. The International Data Corporation just published a research report. By 2026, Salesforce itself is going to create a 9 million new jobs. And they had a big Salesforce Dream Conference, Worldwide Dream Conference in three months back in San Francisco. Again, most of the speakers and all the intellectuals presented there, they are showing the results. And the Salesforce is the, one of the greatest tool that invented over the decade back and across, usually across every industry, healthcare, manufacturing, customer relationship, everywhere. I think this is a great program, helping our community members with this new skill set, especially since we are going into a recession kind of situation. And this is a time we definitely need to support our community members with this kind of upscale program so that we can keep our strength in the city and build a more strong economic development. Thank you.
Thank you. See no other public comment. I'll bring it back to the council for any questions or directions for staff.
I have a couple of comments.
Go ahead. Well, hang on.
No, Amanda was going to put that list of the.
It's fine, you can bring that back up. Go ahead, David.
So Amanda, when you and I were at that, that conference put on by the National League of Cities, there were some suggestions they made us about how to either set yourself up to do appropriate programs or how to, how to think about them. And the notes I took at the time, which I pulled up again preparing for tonight, were one, it's got to be measurable, whatever you do. So I appreciate having something measurable here in terms of, we're setting up a system that would be measurable going forward. Because there are apparently a lot of consultants in this space who, you know, will participate in these sorts of grant programs, but they may not be very successful. But that doesn't usually matter because people don't pay attention to the success rate. So I think, you know, measurable going forward, but also measurable going backwards is probably critical. So of all these applicants that we've had come in with the proposals, do we have a way to verify how successful they've been in previous programs? As opposed to just coming before us now and saying, hey, look at the great thing we can do for you. So that's sort of one line of thought is measurability. The second big point they made for us there was the best programs have a clear partnership with industry so that when you complete the program, there is a job. In other words, industry buys into, we agree with this training program, we like to get people from this training program. We will hire everybody coming from this training program. As opposed to a training program that's going to generically prepare you for an industry, but not necessarily have any connections to get you an actual job. So the strong, the strong pressure they, many speakers are made was find companies that are doing job training that have an exact link. Like, I don't know, a bigger, a bigger company that says, we will hire as many people as you can put out because that's our, that's our demand. The third interesting point was, who are you actually trying to help? If you don't know who you're trying to help, then you probably don't know what you're doing. So are we trying to help high school graduates from Cordova High School or from our community? Don't have good job options? Are we trying to help people who have been laid off and are college educated and they're trying to get retrained for another college-educated employment? Who are we actually trying to help? And that's a serious, that's a seriously tough question. Right there. Does this work for challenged demographics, for example? And then finally, cost for participant was the number four one. So in some way, if I look at, you know, $1.8 million, 192 people, that's, that's a lot of resource per person. If only 20% of those are successful or 25% of those are successful, now it's, you know, 1.8 million to benefit a small number. That, that might be worthy of our consideration. The, the last thing I'll add here is interestingly, the League of Cities has looked at this, California League has looked at this issue. And the conclusion at the board was, cities are not in this business. Counties are, state is, many colleges are, universities are, businesses are. Cities are not in this business. And I'm wondering how true that is for our region. We just heard from someone who called in that a program was done at the City of Sacramento. That a program was done at the city of Sacramento, but it was actually funded by GSAC, not by the city. So. I'm just curious if any, is anybody else doing this? Because the other reasons I just lined out and how you do it might suggest why it's pretty hard for a city to manage this.
Well, frankly, we're not managing it, we're funding it, right? We're, we're going to get results from it, but we're not administering it ourselves. Right?
Well, we are in this step, we're choosing who we're gonna, what program we're gonna.
Right, but, but they're, these contractors are going to be administering said program, right?
But the cities, this League of Cities position was, we don't even, cities, this isn't even our job to fund this.
I, I, I would say that was relatively what we learned about. You know, basics, supporting basic needs for higher education students was. We were spending more money than just about, from a per capita basis than anybody else in that cohort. And getting better results from it too, frankly. Um. But a lot of the other cities, I mean, it was, it was youth development department, it was these other things and they had some internships that they, but, but they had their own staff. Running them out of said department and, and getting, you know, getting kids internships. And that was their, that was their workforce development thing. It was, but it was under the guise of something completely different. It wasn't this.
A brief point of clarification, the caller who was from General Assembly, that fin, that program was funded by the city of Sacramento. And they partnered with the Urban League and, um, Greater Sacramento Economic Council to find both applicants for the program and job placements.
So they didn't get funding from those two agencies?
No, it came from the city of Sacramento.
And I think a lot of it was COVID and one-time funds. I, I say that because I'm the treasurer of the Urban League, so I, I was aware of that one.
So do we, do we have measurable data on these guys from previous actions?
Sure, so for.
Oh, and I'm sorry, measurable was, are they still employed twelve months after the program ended? That was considered the standard.
So that specific metric you just mentioned is why we are looking to partner with SSL Innovations on that to be able to track. All the individuals going through these programs is, are they employed at six months? Are they employed in twelve months? Are they employed in eighteen months and twenty four months? And so we looked to a third party, um, to gather that data and make sure that they have, um, those working relationships with all of our participants. Um, because that's going to be a pretty intensive call, text, email list. Um, we do have information on those providers that we previously had funded last go around. Um, so those employment rates ranged from twenty nine percent to. Fifty three percent, thirty five percent and thirty six percent. So looking at our targets going forward, we're pretty close in that. Um, all of these, they are required to have partnerships with existing businesses. Either in the city, in the region and or some of these are people who are looking to hire remote workers. And so of those, um, all of them are required to have some working relationships with, um. Um, our business community, to the point of who we're trying to help, I think that is a question that we should likely tackle. Um, looking to policy decisions going forward, right now the flight before you really is soup to nuts. We look to, how do we encompass the greatest number of people with the various needs, either those with higher barriers? And those with just a small, um, help in the right direction. And I think that's really a policy question that, um, just to be honest, that we need to dive into, because I think that's a little meatier.
And that, that's kind of my reaction to this. Like, I know Northern California Construction Training very well. Um, my last job, I placed one of my employees on their board of directors, I funded them. For multiple years at my former employer a handful ago. Um. Clearly, they asked for a very ambitious number. I'm not sure how many that covered. Uh, but they asked for one fourth of all of the asks that are here. Um, but if I'm, if I'm looking at this. And looking at the trends now, in the interest rate environment that we're in, and you're seeing mass layoffs in tech. That, that's a very soft employment market at the moment. And I see a whole bunch of things on here focused on tech. Um, the Northern State Building Industry Association is housing. That's also seen a, a significant slowdown, um, in that industry. Northern California Construction Training traditionally is training for commercial development, which is not seeing the same kind of slowdown. Um, that is being experienced in some of those other markets. Um, and when you talk about remote working. My big, one of my biggest concerns, because ultimately we're spending this money to benefit the city. So this needs to be somewhat self-serving beyond the fact that we're trying to train people and get them good jobs. But we also want to train them in areas that keep them here as residents and taxpayers. And if we're training them so that they can get a job and move to Montana and work remotely, what was the point of that, right? And so when I look at, and again, that's how I, that, so when I look at Northern California Construction Training, when I look at North State BIA, when I look at General Assembly. Um, and I'm thinking manufacturing, I'm thinking construction. Those are not things that are as easily exported skills into other areas, right? If you get training here and it's on the job for a construction company or NCCT, you're likely going to go work for that company here. And hopefully stay here, live here, pay taxes here and benefit the community in general. If I train you on how to work in software or cybersecurity and you can move anywhere you want in the country and keep that job or get it somewhere else. That's not as self-serving to the city, it's not as beneficial to the city. So I guess my, my only feedback to this, to this list is. I'd really like to see if there was a way to, to go back and renegotiate with NCCT for a more moderate amount. And see if there's something that they can do with it, because out of all of these, that's one. And, and he said it, they have an eighty, in, in my experience, they've had an eighty to ninety percent placement rate. Except during the Great Recession where construction jobs disappeared for five to seven years. Um, it's mostly in commercial areas. Um. To the, to the gentleman that, that spoke from the, the carpenters, uh, union earlier. They're mainly placing them in union jobs with pensions and benefits and all those other things. And it, it's interesting that we were just talking about this in the National League of Cities and in our Community Economic Development Committee. Around this idea of how do you catalyze jobs? And you create jobs that don't pay a living wage, that don't have health insurance with them, that don't have, you know, pensions along with them. Is that a good, right? We can create all kinds of jobs, but are they livable wage? Are they things that actually are bringing the community up, right? NCCT, for the most part, they're placing them into, into building trade unions.
So I'm inclined to agree with you.
So, yeah, so I, I would hope that if we looked at this, whether that's finding some more money to put into this so that we can include them. Or rearranging some of these, that one to me, I get that they ask for a lot of money. And again, I know you got to kick the tires, but. Knowing them well, I would really like to see a way to, to get them funding.
So, um, my first question to Amanda, um, this afternoon had to do with, um. Um, just the basic question about whether or not this program goes through the same kind of, um. Validation that, that Stacy Delaney puts the, uh, Community Enhancement Fund through. And because we never really had that conversation about this, we just started doing it. And, and there's nothing wrong with that, but if you contrast that with the way we started off with Measure H. Then there were specific goals and, and like, like David said, who's the client, you know? Um, are they allowed to employ people or does it have to be something that's a hundred percent benefit to somebody else? That kind of thing. And, um. Um, and then, then David almost touched on it, but the question of. What are we really doing with the money? Are we doing something like, David's always used the phrase, um, if it exists in the yellow pages, which don't even exist anymore. Should we be doing it? And it seems as though, um, the League of California Cities has asked that same kind of a question. You know, what is the role of cities in this kind of a program? Um, I am definitely sympathetic with the North Cal, Northern California Construction Training, uh, organization. Because I've been to a couple of their graduations and, um, and I know the people who started it and. From my perspective, um, I know, I'm not, um. I'm sure that Garrett and Siri have completely different perspectives on the value of. Um, um, high-tech education, but, um, from my perspective. It really is important to teach people how to work with their hands. So when we're talking about operating a forklift, um, talking about logistics, especially in today's environment. Um, talking about, um, electrical or mechanical assembly, those kinds of things, as well as working on a job site. That's definitely something that I would feel we should be, uh, trying to help provide to people. Not just the high-tech jobs. So if there's, if there, as Donald's request, there really is a way to, um, to get them to, to rethink. What they might be asking for.
Yeah.
Um, and maybe, actually, the only thing that struck me in this. Um, women in data got more. They also had a huge ask and they got, um, a lot more in terms of dollar value. Than others did. And I just wondered how that happened to shake out.
Can I just say one other thing too about NCCT? They, again, they drive into the, into the building trade schools. Which IBW is out on Old Placerville Road at the old bar office. Sheet metal workers is out at Mather. I mean, we're talking about. They're training people to get into training, long-term training programs that are in this city.
Yeah.
Right? So you're talking International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, sheet metal workers.
Yeah.
Um.
One of them's over on.
Plumbers and pipe fitters is, is not far from here either. So you're actually convincing people that are living here to stay here, take the training here and keep living here.
One of them's actually located over on Kilgore, but.
Yes, I forgot.
Then the other, uh.
App's been blocked on your system.
Yeah, I know.
Might want to get a computer guy, even though our market's soft.
Uh, but again, I'm not, I'm not talking about.
That was.
IT, I'm talking about the one, I'm talking about the ones that, that you do all your work from home.
I, I understand, I'm, I, I agree with this at all. You guys aren't.
But David's, David's question about, um.
How much did Facebook?
It wasn't David's question, but the question about cost per person. Cost per person is probably also a really important metric. So it's, there's no question in my mind that we need to do some, some measurement and set up some metrics, but it. We need more information about what we're doing and, um, the process. Used to examine these applications.
Oh, your mic's not on.
Now the mic's on. Uh, we do have all the data on, um, cost per participant. And I can quickly run those through with you tonight, if that's what you're interested in. Um, and then I can also talk to, um, so women in data specifically is nine thousand three hundred and seventy five dollars. Per participant. And a lot of that had to do with, um, they originally had five cohorts. So they reduced their cohorts of, um, ten people per, they reduced it down. And they were one of the few that has an explicit, um, agreement with various companies to start placing people. Um, into positions.
Okay.
If, of course, you know, you still have to apply, you still have to be qualified, you still have to do that part of it.
You have to do the work first.
No employment is guaranteed.
All right, tech guy's turn.
Tech guy's turn.
Our market's not soft. We have thousands of jobs. We're making millions of dollars. And the difference between us nerds being employed and is the high, how much someone makes. And how much tax revenue can go back to the city from what we actually do. That's the difference on the tech side. So that being said, um, three of these groups I've never heard of and telling someone that you're going to train them in cybersecurity is silly. Um, this doesn't make any sense in my industry. I don't want any more online trainings. I want trainings where people guarantee jobs right after. Not interested in any of that. There's three of these I could knock right off. And we can go back and talk to Northern Cal. I think they just didn't know how to ask us properly. And the BIA, I, I wanna, uh, put more money towards them. Um, DP is, uh, was created here in Rancho Cordova. And actually went and got people high-end jobs. So I'm, I want to see, the, the, we reward when someone does good work and basically destroys. But even the local governments are, they have people and place them in jobs and get them high paying jobs. Women Data is unheard of, besides being one of the only cities in the region that, that, that partner with them. They went and placed people in really, really high-end tech jobs and get the jobs. Like, you know, the difference between like, you go to League of Cities and they're talking about, well, you know, cities don't want to get into this. We want to get into this because we actually go get people jobs that live in our city. Unlike everybody else that kind of like throws money at it or puts a big training or, oh, you can go online and learn how to be a web coder, blah. Or, or something like that, like that's great. I want to see when they get finished training, how many of them end up in jobs. One, you hundred percent need the training model. So get the people that are going to show you the, the breakdowns and stuff like that, hundred percent. I'm looking for DP solutions. Um, Folsom Cordova partnership is interesting because. I think that's more, um, uh, blue collar jobs. I want to, I want to say blue collar training and helping people get jobs out of that. Is that pretty much correct for that one, from what I was reading?
Yeah, the FCCP model or Folsom Cordova Community Partnership does more wraparound services.
Right.
They do have a job placement thing, but it's, um, it's really helping people be ready to enter the workforce. And then they do have placements in various local jobs around town.
Yeah, so that one's, that, it's because it's, well, it's got our name in it too. Um. Sorry, it's just, our name's there, like that. Um. Uh, North State Building, I want, I want that training, I want the unions fed. Um, I think those are great assets because like, like high-end nerds that come out of DP Global and Women Data. Those people are going to be here for the rest of their lives. They, once you get into a union trade. And if we're the place and you settle roots in Rancho Cordova, we're a blue collar city. We've always been a blue collar city. And those create great jobs. I don't know if the guy got a little too aggressive and wants to come back and really think about that. But three of these guys have never been in our city and are, are selling something that's not really necessary. Whereas I would love to see DP, Women in Data, um, North State BIA, people that I know fully well. Will go and get people into jobs. So, um, I think we can do something with the number more to help them match out. Or, uh, go find money, because I know the whole reason you had only a million bucks, um, I thought you actually had more money. To go find these kind of jobs, because I know this was from one of Donald's, um. Really getting the community to engage to replace the jobs. And if the city's willing to engage and have these jobs, everyone's willing to come around and pick these people up. Like, all the businesses are looking for new employees right now. It is critical that we put these, these jobs out here. And people are looking at Rancho Cordova as, as a, as a trendsetter, because we're not just throwing money at the problem. We're, we're throwing money educatedly to go find jobs, to put people to work. And so what I want to do is reward the people that came through. Women in data came through for us. They brought us jobs. Did what they said and produced something amazing. DP Global Solutions, even though they were young and baby. Um, they still found people jobs and got people engaged in the community. Like, those things need to be rewarded. North State BIA, of course, is a trademark of our community. Um, Northern, we wanted, we want to feed the unions at the same time. So I'm looking more of a reorganization on maybe the top three coming down and putting the money into the lower groups. And finding ways to filter back down, because those ones I know, I don't mind trying one person new or a couple new on different. John, different types of jobs, but I'm not looking for that much, because that's really the next steps of our community. I, uh, high-tech is what we're breeding in Rancho Cordova, so I, I, you know, we are, we just closed the largest RAM producer. And who's going for number one, and they're going to need jobs. And if we can be the ones to help provide them, we'll attract more business here. So I would like something like that, or, or, you know, we can go, I can help you guys to find more money. Because I, I really feel like this tests us apart. I, it wasn't that amazing thing, but I think we do stuff differently here. I have a big old chip on my shoulder. Rancho Cordova does stuff in a unique way. And that's what helps us have the highest job per capita private sector in the region. Because we do stuff and, and, and even though I wasn't in a hundred percent agreement with Donald when he did it. He basically protected all the businesses, put a big wall up around the entire community and let them get through COVID with programs like this. This was the thing, and I want to see these kind of grow. So, um, so those are the kind of things I'm, I, I, I'm thinking right now. As the only nerd that's here right now. I wish she was here to, to talk with me, but I'm going to channel her and. So I, so. Looks like we have a, a resolution to adopt, but I think you have some direction that we'd like to see some adjustments to these allocations. Do you want to bring this back to another meeting? Do you have enough here to go on? How would you like to proceed?
So I have two items. So the, um, SSL, which is the metric tracking program, we can also bring that back at the same time.
I'll just do that.
Or we can improve that, okay? And then the other thing I am hearing is to come back to council, we'll rework this list, we'll talk with, um, everyone. We'll also add in the cost per participant for all of these numbers. And then based on. And then based on this conversation, we will regroup with Northern California Construction Training and then potentially remove another provider off of the list.
I, well, I, I think Garrett had some very specific feedback that maybe he wants to give to you on certain ones. I, I, I'm familiar with a handful of these and other ones I, I don't know at all. And so I, I, I don't have any recommendation not to fund. I would like to see NCCT get a contract and, and, and start to operate here and, and serve our residents. But I, I would trust staff to try to work on that and bring back a recommendation that's more workable. But I think you heard at least, at least three of us say that they were, that we were in favor of that. I think the SSL metric tracking thing, I think that, yeah, that's, that's fine. We can move forward with that today or we could bring the whole thing back at once. And if that means, again, find some Measure H, find some Measure R, find.
Some sprinkles.
ARPA, I don't know. But I, if it's add to this, to this allocated amount, I think we would be in support of that if you want to find it. Or rearranging these, understanding, I think, what some of our priorities and, and I, I, I get Garrett's comments to, to my comments. But again, what I'm, what I'm talking more about is some of the largest tech companies in this country are doing some of the first layoffs in the history of their company. And so when you look at it from that standpoint, Facebook never believed they would ever not grow and they're not growing. Amazon was about to open millions of square feet of office and, and warehousing space in this region and trillions across the country and not doing any of it. And they're laying off 10,000 people. So there are parts of, of the tech world that because of interest rate environments and things that are happening, and that's really how they operate their company, it's becoming very expensive and they're starting for the first time in our history that we've known of, really since the late nineties, tech's laying people off. I don't think San Jose ever anticipated that ever happening in their life. And so when I look at that comparatively to the, the, the extreme need for building trades and, and, and construction workers in all aspects of the economy, that's a bigger priority to me than, than some of, than some of the tech trainings that, that, that we may see out there. Because I, I don't think the same opera, I get the opportunity for a company like yours, but for some of those larger, those larger providers, I think it's going to be, it's going to be a rocky next three to five years in, in certain areas, especially the ones that relied on, on, on advertising.
So I guess the question.
Yeah, so how, knowing that, how would you like to proceed? Do you want to bring this back?
The question is, does it all come back or, or do you want to bifurcate?
Let's bifurcate the.
Well, let's ask, how would you like to do it?
My recommendation would be to take council's opinion on the SSL Innovations Contract this evening and then bring back the flight of services provided for the workforce development.
You want a bifurcated motion so we can, you want us to approve SSL tonight? And we can, and then we'll, and in that same motion, we will bring back at a later, at a date to be determined.
So this was actually, I'll leave it to Adam's feedback. But this was just, this was just recommendation for council feedback tonight on the workforce development programs. We would have to bring those all back anyway.
Okay, because it's saying adopt a resolution for workforce metrics track. So we're, okay, so, so the, so the resolution is only for SSL and then you've gotten your, your feedback on the rest of them. So I think with that, you've gotten your feedback and I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution or the metrics tracking.
I had a couple items for feedback. I think we should.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you did, I thought you already did yours.
I kind of did. Let me, let me summarize.
Sorry.
I think the who are we helping question is really important. So there's some people, there's some, I, I can't actually assign based on what I, what I have in front of me, who all of these folks would purportedly be helping. So that, that's challenging. You know, is it a high school degree? Is it someone who's mid-career who needs retraining? Is it helping almost vulnerable people here? I think Donald's point about, you know, we're in the city. We don't want to train people to move to Montana and do this job is really important. The community college effort that we did was aimed at high school kids who may not think they could go to college. That got them to college. I would say we should probably focus on that same cohort for a substantial portion of this. So if you're talking about North State Building Industry Association or NorCal Construction, that is probably that segment. Because we are generating kids like crazy out of high school and they have no idea what to do next.
I, I would also say NCCT also specializes in redirection of people that have interacted with law enforcement.
I was just going to say the same thing.
So you're rebuilding people's lives that have been.
Yes, these are people who have troubled paths.
Correct.
And then at the other end of the spectrum, I would focus on Rancho Cordova businesses who are looking to hire, this appears to be all tech, the others. So if that's what the demand is, then, you know, make sure that there's a local job for them. Otherwise, we're training them for work outside of our community and I don't know how much, how much sense that makes. I wouldn't do SSL yet because I don't know what the rest of this is going to look like. I would wait. And in, in particular, I would be interested in these organizations and their, their data from previous work. Like previously, how many of their graduates had jobs in the intended sector 12 months later? That kind of a measure. Let's see. And then I was, just, let me just pitch one other thing that was very interesting out of that conference. Rather than do it this way, there was an idea that, you know, cities often give rebates to companies that move to your jurisdiction.
Right.
You come in, you, say Sacramento does this, we do this under some very rare circumstances. Company comes in, oh, we're going to give you $10,000 per job that you brought us above a certain pay level. They suggested setting up this sort of a scenario with a panel of potential organizations and giving that new business that came to your community credits to invest in this. So new business moves to town, we say, guess what? You've bought yourself a hundred thousand dollars worth of training through this panel of programs that we have. Pick which one you want and then you get that many employees out of it, out of this training program. And then if it works, they will, they will complete and continue to fund it. If it doesn't work, then, you know, shame on you and the city for not having better program. But that induces a natural supply-demand operation as opposed to us on the side trying to add in supply and we're not in the demand business. Right? That actually links the two. The consumer of the educated person with the funding of the education. So I love that idea. That was like the most, that appeared to be the most efficient way to do it. And it doesn't make us have to make odd judgments on the side when we don't know how to do the training and we don't employ these people. Which is this odd feeling we have right now, trying to figure out how do we.
Am I allowed to employ these people? No, right?
Talk to the lawyer afterwards.
Yeah, that's a side conversation with Adam. So going forward, I don't know if I see the city in this business. But that, that method I just outlined, I'd be happy to start that, you know, boost that. Even for existing companies here, you know, say, hey, XYZ, you need to hire people. Here are some programs we've identified that can do that. We'll give you some credit dollars to do that. In reality, we're funding the program, but that's just to start the ball rolling.
I mean, the, the tough thing about this is if we just looked, if we had looked at this, like this much opportunities, right, a year ago with what the job market was doing and that everyone on, and their mother was hiring, right? Because I think we even started this by saying, you know, we've got a whole bunch of food service workers that got laid off three or four times and really needed a different. And now you have restaurants begging people to, to, right? So like even what we were trying to fix two years ago is a different problem today. But with interest rates doing what they're doing and, and purposely trying to slow down the economy, you're going to see pain in very specific parts of the economy that people are going to need to be retrained into the things that are, again, more resilient and making sure that we do that. So it's a fascinating problem.
I actually agree with Donald, but I also think that that's the power we have because you put that, that measure in place, we now can go and.
I'm not the only one that.
I turned on the heater right here. I'm sorry, I apologize. It's confusing all of you. I'll turn it off. It's freezing up here. No.
You're my jacket off.
Yeah, it's cold. No, but I, I, one, I, I think we should move forward with SSL innovation because we need the metrics training because that's good, that's good governments to be.
That's going to take a lot to implement anyway.
Yeah, so we should get that started. The second thing, and that we, we can ask the, have them also go backtrack and find out some more data on the past. The second thing is, I think I agree with Donald that it makes most sense is that we can see where the markets are weakest in our community because we have, we are the largest per capita small business or private sector jobs. So we can see where they're weakest and who needs the most help and start to tilt training towards those. And right now, we have someone that's bringing in 2,500 jobs on the high-end tech side. We know that's coming through. Plus, we know Blue Shield.
And healthcare.
And healthcare is about to open their IT mega center. And the more you can provide these people, the, the harder their lock-in. And these people will move here because you just gave them houses.
Though, that's actually a beautiful point. What if you went to UC Davis and our big tech company that's coming in and say, who do you need to hire here?
I bet you someone already has.
Who do you worry about hiring here?
I'm pretty sure someone already has a relationship then. And they're on our board right now.
Let's be really clear, especially when it comes to UC Davis.
Yeah.
Between healthcare, Dignity Health, UC Davis, Blue Shield, the insurance and health-related VSP, right? I mean, it's one of the reasons, if you go and you look at where my bank decided to buy a building in Roseville, it's because that entire street there on Douglas Boulevard is, it's, it's banking, it's mortgage offices, it's, I mean, it's everything to do with, with finance, with the financial services. We have created an, an insurance and health sector, which is, I, I would argue, the vast majority of the business parks here are dedicated to that. And now we have this large flash memory company, right? But that, that's kind of a unique one to that. But if you look here, the vast majority between, and, and, and one of the reasons that a lot of these companies chose to set up here is VSP's right there. And they're all poaching from the same and, you know, hiring from the exact same pool. So as we look at that, again, that, that makes a lot of sense. Find out what their needs are and how that lines up with these. If it is tech that they need, but is it, you know, what's the, what's the insurance about, like how long you're going to live in actuarial? You know, do they need more of those guys to go and run numbers on how long people are going to live? Or do different, well, that, that's life insurance, not health insurance.
So if we had like five of the big employers sitting around and saying, these are the skills we need.
Yeah.
And ask them, well, which of these programs is going to work for you? Maybe that's a smarter way to fund this.
What I can tell you from the construction side is all of the, the union halls over here that are training people are struggling to find people to, to walk in the door. So, I mean, when you look at it, NCCT, again, the BIA, it's a little bit different. The housing market is slowing down on purpose. The government is, is making the housing market slow down. So I don't know what kind of growth is there in the next two years.
But the great part about those guys that work in there can go.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying don't fund them. I'm just saying, I'm just saying they're, they're. It, it actually, it's actually harder than you think between those two skill sets. Building houses and building skyscrapers are two very different things. Or building hospitals to houses are.
Bring in contractors, like, all right, contractors, who do you want to hire employees from? Where are you going to get them?
We have several large contractors.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, that's one of our strengths.
Including the one that just got an award of being the best contractor in the region.
We got, we got one building, building a building for us on Folsom Boulevard that's going to move their regional headquarters here, right? Swinburne.
Oh, yeah.
So might end up being one of the tenants, right? So you, you're looking at those even opportunities. So I, I, hopefully staff, you have what you need here. I, I think I'm fine with moving forward with SSL contract tonight because no matter what, we're going to want to track this and we might as well get that started and get that out of the way. And then you can just worry about the funding allocations. So I'll entertain a motion for the resolution.
So moved?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Gatewood, a second by Budge, roll call please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulipati is absent. Councilmember Sander.
Nope, she needed to be at this.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes, although.
Are you wavering on your motion?
I think it's a little, well, no, just to get it under discussion, but I think it's a little premature, but. Just with the caveat that they, that, that, that the team needs to decide what exactly it is that they want these people to evaluate. Because it sounds like there really might be a lot of data out there that just wasn't necessarily included in tonight's staff report. And so the question is, you know, what, what is it that we really want them to do? And so and does it justify the amount of money they're asking for?
So your vote would be?
Yes.
Okay, and I.
Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item is agreed to, three, one. Okay. Council requests for future agenda items. Okay, fourteen. We'll be adjourning to closed session and we'll be adjourning tonight in the memory of Ron Bueller.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll be back out to report out of closed session shortly.
Recording in progress.